I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is eighteen hundred hours, right on the dot. And every week, or every second week when we have our meetings, we always start off with a land acknowledgement. And tonight, councillor Ogden's going to read that for us. So councillor Ogden, sending it over to you.
Thank you, mayor. Land on which the city of St. John, or Monauquist, is situated is the traditional territory of Wistigway. Willisquey, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Migmau, and the Pesta Makwadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds that protected their rights to lands and the resources. Could we please pause for a moment?
Can I ask everyone to stand for the national anthem, please? Okay.
Ivan.
So tonight, just before we get started, I just wanted to bring your attention to, well, tonight we'll have twelve, on item twelve point three is Housing for All Strategy Update. It's the red zone implementation. Our Housing for All Strategy was adopted in July of two thousand and twenty-four, so just over a year ago. We've had discussions, meetings, we've worked with the, through the complexities of encampments and the complexities of red, yellow, green zones. We've had full support at council in closed session to produce, to proceed with the presentation. Council unanimously adopted the Housing for All Strategy back in July of two thousand and twenty-four. There's twenty-eight actions within the plan, and staff will present tonight our hu- uh, human, uh, human, sorry, human rights-based approach. So I just want to bring that to your attention. And I'm going, just so the people are aware that we'll have that discussion tonight, there are a couple of notice of motions that are in there, eleven-two and eleven-three, which are in fact notice of motions. And that's just to let us know that the motions will be coming forward for the debate in two weeks. So over to you, city clerk, for the next item.
Thank you, your worship. First item would be the approval of August eighteenth council minutes.
Councillor Killen and the deputy on the question, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next, approval of minutes of August the twenty-seventh.
August twenty-seventh, councillor Sullivan and councillor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Uh, next is approval of the agenda. We do have an addition from committee of the whole. That would be item seventeen point one, entitled Acquisition of Parcel of Land at thirty-three-eight-one Greenhead Road. Also, there's a request, your worship, to move forward on the agenda, item thirteen-two, which is the audited financial statements, as we have auditors waiting. And also, I'd, I'd, I would remind council that we have sent you an updated resolution with an additional item for item twelve point three, the Housing for All Strategy, which was, which was a motion to allow the mayor to send a letter to the province.
Okay, so we'll take most to approve the agenda. Councillor Stewart and councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Not seeing any, next item.
And next is the consent agenda.
Uh, deputy, over to you for all those items.
Thank you. Worship, move five point one through to five point fifteen, please.
Councillor Sullivan is seconding that. Uh, on the question, councillor Redwine.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of comments. Uh, five point four, Housing for All Contract. I've had a few calls, and I just wanted to let residents know that I had chatted with staff ahead of time, and Fresh Start had met all the criteria for the RFP. And so I'm voting in favor of it. And, um, we're looking forward to having a good partnership with, with Fresh Start. So I just wanted to, um, to make a note of that. And the other thing that I just wanted to highlight is five point eight and five point nine are correspondence on eleven point one, if residents want to look at those.
Okay, thank you. I'll just quickly mention five point six, the Transit Commission letter from, uh, that we've got regarding fares of the transit, a monthly pass versus a monthly parking pass. That's actually been sent on to parking, so that they're aware that the monthly parking pass is, that goes up for transit, that the, uh, that the parking pass should also follow that, or the, or the pass for the transit pass. Okay, so, uh... Oh, councillor Harris, sorry.
Yeah, I think you may have answered it. Thank you, mayor. So five point six, sometimes when we receive things for information, it's because there's nothing we can do about them. But for, in this case, you're saying that five point six, the letter from the Transit Commission is being moved on to the parking, okay.
Go, yeah, go to park, to Mark D'Antoni has that.
All right, thank you.
Okay? So on the question then, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Uh, next is the item moved forward on the agenda. So that would be item thirteen point two, the two thousand and twenty-four audited consolidated financial statements.
Councillor Sullivan, I'm passing this over to you as our Chair of Finance.
So fi- your finance committee met with the auditors, who presented the city with a clean audit opinion, which is a highlight of all of this. Representatives of the city's audit committee, or sorry, auditing firm are here in attendance. Should council have any questions on the opinion that's in the kit? Mr. Levine, our controller, is also here. Should council have any questions on the statements? A few highlights. Uh, the net debt of approximately six million dollars, now when it was over three hundred and thirty million as recent as two thousand and eighteen. Our long-term debt continues to decline, with general fund reduced forty percent since two thousand and fourteen, and the utility fund long-term debt has been reduced forty-two percent since two thousand and seventeen, meaning less money is paid on interest and more money gets to pay, be paid on services. The general fund operating budget year-end results. We came in with thirty-nine thousand dollars more than we spent, which is not fed on a hundred and seventy million dollars. And the utility fund ended up with a surplus of two point six million dollars. Continued improvement in the financial health of the city's reserve fund, so we have more money in our reserve fund than we did at the start of the year. And an important shout-out to our partners, the federal and provincial government. We received twenty-four point five million dollars in capital funding from other levels of government. So certainly, we thank our federal and provincial partners for those important contributions. So if there are any questions for either our auditors or Mr. Levine, we'd be happy to entertain them now. And I'll put a motion on the floor that common council approve the two thousand and twenty-four consolidated financial statements, the two thousand and twenty-four St. John Trade and Convention Centre financial statements, and our trust fund financial statements.
He definitely is going to second that, thank you. So on the questions, anyone have any question while we have the auditors here with us this evening?
If there's no question, I'll make one more important point just for those who are looking at the statements. These are the consolidated statements for all of the entities that we are involved with and all the money we get. So the important money on our budget is we were thirty-nine thousand dollars to the good. When you look at the statements, it looks like we were how many, many millions of dollars? Can't quite find my note here, but to the good. But a lot of that is the money that got, we got from the provincial and federal government, St. John Energy's built in there. City operations, we basically had an even year, which is good news.
Perfect. So I'm not seeing any questions for the auditors. I want to thank them for being here this evening with us. So I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
They're up there. Thank you, thank you, Craig. Thanks, team. Next item, city clerk.
Next is item number six, members' comments.
Members' comments. Councillor Redwine, over to you first.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know that the LARSH gala is taking place this Wednesday night. So if you haven't gotten a ticket, reach out to LARSH. They always help people with intellectual disabilities, great organization. Congratulations to the YMCA in the North End, that's celebrating a ten-year anniversary this week. And I also wanted to make mention that our community art grant applications are open until September the fourteenth. I'm told that no applications have come in. So I encourage people to go online and apply for our arts grants. We want to keep the arts scene very busy. Also, toward four, we do have a public meeting tomorrow. Sergeant Jeremy Edwards will be there to go over ATV safety, neighborhood safety. Meeting is taking place at the Champlain Heights Elementary School at seven o'clock in the gymnasium. Thank you to the Champlain Heights Association for hosting this. And finally, mayor, I just want to say a huge thank you to Barb Crawford and the whole works team. They have dug out the creek in Glen Falls, if you have not noticed online. I was so thrilled that they found time to do this really, really big project. It hasn't been done since Island Court was mayor. I think it's going to have a huge impact to help mitigate some flooding in the area. Maybe not fix everything, but it will help. And so, great work to staff. Thank you for taking on this big project that I'd hoped for, but didn't hold my breath on, so I'm so excited. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It's a good one. Councillor Sullivan, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Some more thank yous to, to our provincial partners. I had the honour of representing council this past Friday at a conference in St. John called Study and Succeed, which is put on by the provincial immigration crew, along with post-secondary training and labor. And what the conference, it, it brings non-Canadians who are studying in New Brunswick together to look at opportunities in the province. The goal from the provincial folks, of course, is to have many of these, many of these students finish their education in the province and then stay in the province. And it was lovely to have the opportunity. The provincial minister kind of smiled and agreed shortly every time I said, "And we want you to stay in the province and St. John." And, and it was just, it was wonderful. I want to thank our partners for having the conference in St. John. Would love to see that here more often. I think there are opportunities there when they do have the conference here to offer to do sessions on St. John. Anyway, hopefully, great crew of students in the audience looking for... Oh, the other folks I need to thank is there were students from St. John in the audience who came to see me afterwards, who loved being here, and I just told them all, because this was Friday night at the start, "You've got a job this weekend. Your job is to take all these other people you're meeting on tours." And they're like, "We already know, we're going to have them down at the waterfront. We're going to have them at five oh six." Perfect. So we've got students in St. John who are working on our behalf to have more students in St. John stay in St. John.
Excellent news. That's great. Thanks for attending that. Okay, I think that's it for members' comments. I'll just say quickly, I want to say thank you to the residents of St. John, because we have had wonderful compliance with keeping our trails closed and people not going into the trails to try to keep fire at bay for us. You know, when we think about a forest fire, we think about it, you know, consuming the forest. We think about it encroaching on people's property. We think about all of these things, but we never, I guess, I was just thinking the other day about all of the little animals that would have been in the forest that, that can't run fast enough before a fire. And think of the birds that are in a nest, and the mother bird knows that she can't get those babies out of that nest to move them. So all of those animals get lost in a fire. All those little small animals that can't gallop fast enough to get out of the way of fire. So our citizens have been really great in respecting the fire ban. So I just want to say thank you, because it's, it's difficult to, to call a ban. And we've done that on the advice of our fire chief, who isn't here this evening, but, and he does that in conjunction and in, in correspondence with the province. And so we have had, like I said, great compliance with it. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. Okay, next item, city clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, next we have a number of proclamations. So the first one on the agenda is seven point one, a proclamation with respect to fetal alcohol syndrome disorder awareness day.
Whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, FASD, is a, is a lifelong neurodevelopmental disability caused by prenatal alcohol exposure affecting over one point six million Canadians, more than Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, Tourette Syndrome, and autism combined. And whereas individuals with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder may experience challenges with learning, memory, attention, emotional regulation, and social skills, requiring ongoing support in education, employment, and healthcare. And whereas FASD Awareness Day, first recognized in nineteen ninety-nine, is held on September ninth to emphasize the importance of going alcohol-free during the full nine months of pregnancy. This year's theme, Everyone Plays a Part, highlights the collective responsibility of supporting individuals diagnosed with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder and their families. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Drehan of St. John, do hereby proclaim September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, as FASD Awareness Day in the city of St. John. Next item, city clerk.
Next is seven point two, another proclamation, World Mitochondrial Disease Week.
Whereas the human body is fueled by trillions of microscopic powerhouses called mitochondria. Present in almost every cell in our bodies, these tiny but mighty energy-producing structures generate the energy we need to survive. When there is dysfunction with these important structures in one or more parts of our bodies, bodies, we see mitochondrial disease appear. And whereas there are hundreds of mitochondrial diseases, and because mito, short for mitochondrial, is very hard to diagnose, many people don't realize that they have the diseases. There's a strong need for more mitochondrial disease research to support those living with and caring for a loved one with mito, for clinicians to be able to diagnose and treat Canadians living with mito. And whereas, whereas World Mitochondrial Disease Week this year is from September fifteenth to twenty-first. The goal of this week is to raise awareness for mitochondrial health and diseases on a global scale. The initiative helps to raise awareness for mitochondrial diseases in Canada and across the globe, which can be crucial for the development of treatments, research on the disease, and providing support to those living with mito. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Drehan of St. John, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth to September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, as World Mitochondrial Disease Week in the city of St. John. Next item, city clerk.
And next is seven point three, a proclamation with respect to Rail Safety Week.
Whereas Rail Safety Week is held across Canada from September fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, and whereas two hundred and sixty-one railway crossings and trespassing incidents occur in Canada, occurred in Canada in two thousand and twenty-four, resulting in sixty-eight avoidable fatalities and fifty-eight avoidable serious injuries. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railway, lights away are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidences involving trains and citizens. And whereas Operation Lifesaver is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the public, rail industry, governments, indigenous communities, police services, media, and others to raise rail safety awareness. And whereas CN and Operation Lifesaver have requested city council adopt this resolution in support of its ongoing efforts to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipality. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Drehan of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of September fifteen to twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, as Rail Safety Week in the city of St. John. Next item, city clerk.
Uh, next we have another proclamation, seven point four, Usher Syndrome Awareness Day.
Whereas Usher Syndrome is a relatively rare genetic order caused by a mutation in any one of at least eleven genes, resulting in a combination of hearing loss and visual impairment. And it is a leading cause of combined deafness and blindness. Whereas more than four hundred thousand people are affected by this genetic disorder worldwide, with at least twenty-four hundred of those in Canada. And whereas Usher Syndrome is incurably, is incurable, sorry presently, it impacts three major senses of the body, vision, hearing, and balance. And whereas there are three clinical types, type one, type two, and type three, which are distinguished by the severity and age when the signs and symptoms of the disease appear. There are at least eleven, eleven different genetic types of the syndrome. One cannot determine the genetic type by clinical testing, as DNA testing is the only reliable way of determining the true genetic type. And whereas, because of limited public awareness, those affected with Usher Syndrome may suffer from depression, anxiety, isolation, loss of independence. The Usher Syndrome community is uniting around the world to spread the public awareness, but especially to be recognized annually the third Saturday of September. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Drehan of St. John, do hereby proclaim September twenty, twenty-five, as Usher Syndrome Awareness Day in the city of St. John. Next item, city clerk.
And the final proclamation is seven point five, National Guide Dog Month.
Whereas guide dogs have assisted blind persons for centuries, guide dogs are not considered as pets. They are highly trained from puppyhood and progress through an extensive guide dog training program before being matched with their legally blind handlers. And whereas the training and care of guide dogs is essential to their success, requiring dedication, expertise, and compassion from trainers and handlers alike. And whereas guide dogs play a vital role in the lives of individuals who are legally blind, providing them with the independence, mobility, and companionship, the bond between dogs and their handlers is one of trust, support, and unwavering dedication, enabling legally blind individuals to navigate their surroundings and communities safely with confidence. And whereas it is important to recognize the significant impact that guide dogs have on the lives of those with vision loss, as well as show appreciation for the hard work and dedication of guide, guide dogs and their trainers. And whereas under the NB Human Rights Act, guide dogs have the right to be in all public spaces, including restaurants, grocery stores, taxis, and transit, and thus a duty to accommodate their handlers up to the point of undue hardship. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donna O'Drehan of St. John, do proclaim the month of September as National Guide Dog Month in the city of St. John. And I urge all individuals to recognize the invaluable support and companionship provided by guide dogs, and to respect their role as working animals by refraining from distractions or interactions that may interfere with their duties. Let us honor the dedication and training that guide dogs receive and show our gratitude for their services in our community. It's hard to do, because those dogs are always wonderful dogs, but you do have to let them do their job. Thank you, city clerk. Next i- next item. I think that's a record for proclamations five.
I believe it is. Uh, so next on the agenda is a letter from our office, item ten point one on the agenda. And this is with respect to a proposed municipal plan amendment for solar energy development. And I will remind council that a public presentation was made at council on July twenty-eighth of the proposed amendments to the municipal, municipal development plan. And this would permit solar energy development with additional zones in the city's rural areas. Our office has completed the required advertising, and we have not received any letters with respect to this application. Council may now choose to refer this to the Planning Advisory Committee for report and recommendation, and authorize the necessary advertising for a public hearing to be held on Monday, October sixth, in the council chamber.
Okay, I'll take a motion for that. The deputy and councillor Sullivan on the question. Councillor Sullivan?
Thanks, your worship. Just, uh, as I understand it, solar energy development, St. John Energy is planning to, uh, co-construct the largest municipal solar energy development. Um, and this is part of that planning phase. However, the reason it is more broadly stated here is so that it opens up the door and slows down the paperwork to be able to do more solar energy developments. This is really cool news as it moves forward. So I'm looking forward to, uh, the process moving forward so that we can open the door to more alternative, non-fossil fuel generation of energy in the city of St. John.
It is exciting. So we've got a motion on the floor to send to PAC for a public hearing. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is eleven point one. It's some submission from councillor Harris with respect to democratic reform. And this is the second meeting of council, so this could now be discussed.
Over to you, councillor Harris.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, we've all read the motion. We had the notice motion two weeks ago. So with a second, I'll just go on to kind of describe and give a bit of a background on the motion.
Okay, well, I'll get, I'll get you to read your motion. Yeah, we'll leave for the audience and everything as well. We read it, and if you get a second, then we'll...
So the proposed motion is to amend section one and three of the Composition and Election of Common Council Bylaw to alter the size and composition of common council to one councillor per ward, two councillors at large, and one mayor, with no change to the deputy mayor appointment. Number two, to amend the bylaw to provide for salaries for members of common council of the city of St. John, to allow all councillors to receive a salary of fifty-nine thousand dollars per year, for the deputy to receive a salary of sixty-five thousand per year, and to leave the mayor's remuneration as it currently stands. Number three, to create a bylaw amendment to require annual performance reviews by the office of the mayor as part of the requirements of a councillor's role. The performance review will be proposed by the incoming mayor and approved by the council. With any amendments required, the performance reviews will be based on clear metrics related to community engagement, council attendance, committee participation, and policy initiatives as approved by council. To repeal section seventeen point six of a bylaw respecting the procedures of common council of the city of St. John, to allow the mayor to vote on all motions at a common, at a council meeting. And finally, to finalize these changes when the next mayor and council are sworn in in two thousand and twenty-six.
Is there a second for councillor Harris's motion? Councillor Killen seconding the motion. Councillor Harris, over to you.
Thanks. So this is, this has gotten actually quite a bit of engagement. I've been interested to see some of the letters coming in, as well as emails. Uh, and it's, it's really meant to be a decision, oh, sorry, a discussion generator for us. Uh, we've changed the composition of council in the past. We used to be, and of course, many councillors here ran when everybody was an at-large councillor. And now we went to a ward system. And in all my time as the FCM representative for council, which you all pointed me to in two thousand and twenty-one, the one thing that keeps coming up with every council I speak to, even around similar-sized cities in the rest of the country, is just how different our arrangement here is in New Brunswick. And when we go and we go to our caucus meetings with every other province, it's crazy to see how many councillors come from New Brunswick. When we consider the fact that Nova Scotia has fifty municipalities and we have ninety, and they have two or three hundred thousand more people to their population than we do. It really is, I think, a carryover system that's, it's been quite antiquated. And despite local governance reform, which has taken place in our, since our time here, we've never really looked at that ratio. What is an appropriate ratio for representation? And so there's a number of, of things in here that I've picked up on since, like I said, going to these, and this is not an FCM initiative, that was misunderstood, but it was an observation out of FCM conversations with other municipalities. And so my hope tonight is that we can have a discussion about what it is we want from our councillors into the future. We're at a time, it's been called a hinge point, uh, you know, a change cycle in how the country has to do business and to find itself. And there's a lot of change being downloaded into municipalities. And, and certainly since I've been tracking council, uh, and, and since getting elected, I've just seen the requirement and the, and even just the opportunity to engage increase each year, while many people have less and less margin to participate. And so the hope here is that we can have a discussion about what it means for a council to have more of a full-time commitment to the role that isn't just dependent on somebody having a lot of flexibility from their employer, but also being retired, to be able... but also being retired to be able to fulfill those commitments. And again, I'm open to any friendly amendments that folks may have. I've, there's been a few things come in that I've picked up on that are, that are interesting. Obviously, there's some concern about the performance reviews. That was more or less an attempt to try to generate that discussion around what it is we should all be trying to achieve. If we're going in a direction together as a, as a committee, um, what are we expecting from our councillors? Because right now, it's, it's pretty fine tuned to showing up to these meetings. Um, and of course, mayor, you have your opportunity to discipline under our old charter, but also under the Local Governance Act in your role. Uh, and this is just meant to clarify, and it would be a group exercise, as I said, something that's voted on by the next council. And just to kill and squash the rumor mill, I do not plan on being here in the next council. So this has nothing to do with me personally. Uh, that was, you know, some running commentary that I heard, but I will not be running in the next municipal election to be here. Um, it's just not possible for me personally. So I hope that kills that part of it, and we can have a more fulsome discussion about any reforms that, uh, that we've picked up on. These were my sort of best five that I picked out of the top shelf in some of these conversations, but I know there's been conversations from others as well that they picked up on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone have any questions for the councillor? I guess the councillor here is, oh, either, hang on. We do have some questions. Councillor Sullivan, over to you first.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, lots of time to think about this, you know, our system of having it posted early. I, I do appreciate that. This is a heavy topic with lots to it. I guess the only thing I, I would offer is this system that we currently use came into place in two thousand and eight. And it came in after the previous council had established a citizen committee to look at and decide, do we want to continue on with ten-at-large councillors? Do we want to continue on and change how, how council is elected? And the citizen committee of the day did all sorts of extensive work and came back and made a recommendation of the council. Um, so while I, I certainly appreciate looking at things, it's something we do and everything else. You should be reviewing plans and having a look at how things are going. And, and the first decision is, is what we're doing, working for the city, or is it not? Um, and, and I also, I appreciate councillor Harris's candor with regards to it not being self-serving because he won't be here. He's just looking at governance. And I, I, for me, I think this gets to the answer before we ask the question, but I have no problem with asking the question. So if it's something council decides to do in our plan, maybe to recommend off, time is short before May's next election, but to have folks look at this, is this the way we want to have the governance in our city? But I would propose if we went down that road, we dig out, how was that done in the past with regards to citizen committee, how do we point it? And, and put the question to a group of leading citizens, maybe with a little representation from council. But we did plan S J in that way, and that was huge for us. And, and so I appreciate the look at how we do things because I would hate to not continue to try to get better at something. Um, I would just like, this is a huge decision. I'd like to see a bigger process. That's all.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Redmond, over to you.
Thanks, Mary. I, you've had a lot of conversations since your motion, councillor Harris. So I guess a couple of questions have kind of come up, and I thought, well, I'll just pose them because I've had other people ask me too. Um, where are we going to pay the extra ninety-eight thousand from? Um, is something going to get cut? Are we going to put up people's taxes? Um, I'm curious if you know another municipality around the size of ours that makes fifty-nine thousand dollars a year for councillor? Like, I'm just curious about that because I didn't find anything myself, but I haven't looked everywhere. So, um, the other thing is, is like, there always seems to be confusion around the role of the mayor. So just for the sake of conversation, say councillor Harris, you ran for mayor and got elected. And say I was just still sitting here, and you had all of these goals, K P I's that you wanted me to meet. If I didn't want to do that, how would you be able to enforce it? Because I mean, you can't fire the councillor unless they're just missing time and all that sort of thing. So I'm just kind of curious because the mayor's position as the chair seems to get confused with management. So, I mean, there's definitely some organizational rules, some very specific, like, leadership position that the mayor has, but anyway, just some questions that I have. So, you know, I totally appreciate the conversation. And in the conversations I've had, by the way, um, there's been a lot of question about, maybe you should all be at large because I'd like to vote that person out, or I would have liked to vote that person in. And I thought, okay, yeah, okay, well, is it more democratic to all be at large? That's a good question, too. So anyway, I like to have conversations. I love governance, you know.
Councillor Harris, pass that over to you then for a quick sort of an answer.
Yeah, uh, appreciate that, mayor. Through you. So who else makes these salaries, first question? And, and to councillor Sullivan, I'll hit that. I, I agree, a citizens' assembly could be, could be a good move on that front. In some ways, this was a precursor to that. Is there some agreement around the table around hitting those ratios? Is there agreement to us kind of getting beyond just the code of conduct that delivers some, some amount of accountability structure, but also very murky and hard to navigate? Um, and so in, in some cases, the citizens' assembly would be a great initiative if we could kind of shorten the timeframe on how long it takes to explore some of that. Either way, for me, I'm, I'm fine with that. At the end of the day, the, the ratios are kind of staggering for New Brunswick and when you compare us. And the salaries question goes to that. So you look at Alberta and B C, and you look at the two systems that they have, uh, there. You know, you look at the size of Surrey, B C, I used that example. And with almost half a million people, they have the same size council as us. So, yeah, they're not the same size city as us, but they were once a city that had to make a decision about what an appropriate ratio of representation was and how much expectation they could put on their councillors. And I, I think we're getting to a place where we have to look at that. I mean, one councillor in Halifax represents about twenty-seven thousand, twenty-six thousand and change people. Here, we represent seventy-two hundred each. But that's not really quite right because some wards are different population sizes. So it's, you know, the, the, the delta between us and Halifax is huge. And the councillors there have, the entire expectation is that they're full-time. They have staff to be able to help them with work and get to some of these events for community engagement. So that ratio is important, I think, for us to get right as we grow. I mean, we're trying to get to eighty-five thousand based on our current ratio, our growth per year. We're going to have no problem doing that in our ten-year timeline, uh, which brings all kinds of other hardships, but it also creates more of a demand. I think everybody here has felt that demand, be more active in their community, to go to meetings, to try to engage with folks, answer emails in a timely way. And when you're doing that off the side of your desk with a full-time job, that's almost impossible. And if you add on the requirement to be able to get freed up from your workplace to go to these committee meetings or to come here early for days, it's really hard for somebody who works an average job unless you have control of your schedule. To ask your employer, for the next four years, I want off Mondays, every other Monday, and then every third, third Thursday, and then these community, like, very, very hard unless you control your own schedule. Um, and so this really was a hope to be able to get that ratio right, compensate people in a way that they can imagine, okay, I'm not going to be able to do this job full-time any longer, but there's a compensation here that will allow me to do the council position full-time. So that's, that's really the hope in that, in that you have more of a democratic representation from the community because you know your councillor is supposed to be there, holding office hours. And, and again, some of these metrics that you pointed out, Donna, or sorry, mayor, um, with regard to where, where do they come from, from the mayor's office? I think if there's an agreement from that council and the mayor to kind of have that contractual relationship to say, here's what we're trying to hit together, and here's where we're going. And then it allows the public to be able to hold their councillors accountable in the middle. So right now, you can say the public has the right to hire and fire, but there's not really any way to weigh in on a councillor's performance during the middle of post-election and right, leading up to the new one or the next one. So anyway, that answers, I think, both your questions and it kind of speaks to councillor Sullivan.
Councillor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Um, also not running again, so this, my support is not in favor of a better future. Um, so, but I do think that this needs to be carved out as a place for people who want to run and want to do so as their main thing. Because what I've observed, just, you know, not even being at F C M, but being in the position, is that, you know, you are just pulled at all different ends. And having had a baby through it, it's one of the most impossible tasks that I ever have done. And it, there is no support for you. You cannot get mat leave when you're a councillor. That doesn't exist because you aren't paying into it. So there's just so many things that, like, if you talk about accessibility, whether you are someone from, you know, a marginalized community, um, maybe perhaps of a disability, a mother, et cetera, there, this isn't enough to support, um, someone who, who has all these other commitments. And I think that this would help with that and try to help attract more people who could take this on and really run with it and really hammer home. Not to say anyone around this table hasn't done that, despite all the things that you're also dealing with. There's entrepreneurs, there's teachers, there's folks that are out there that, like, it's really hard to do a flag raising. It's really hard to hit an eleven o'clock meeting when, you know, you're, you're working. So it's, uh, it's the, the timing that councillors put into it and the where, when and where they have to be and go, like, it makes it really impossible for a lot of folks. And I just think that a citizens' assembly, to councillor Sullivan's point, and a sort of, a, a deeper dive by staff into what this could look like, bring that together. I don't know if you're going to be able to do it for this next council, but maybe you can do it for the twenty-thirty folks. So that would be my thought.
I'm going to get my, there we go, twenty-thirty, uh, deputy mayor.
Take your worship. Um, I, I mean, there's so many reasons why I can't support this. Uh, I've been on council for a while now. I enjoy it. I pick my priorities, and right now, council's a big priority of mine. I raised three kids, and I wasn't on council because my priority was my kids, and that's, that's where I spent my time. Um, I think that, you know, I think that if you feel that people that are retired or, you know, moved on in life in terms of raising their kids, their kids out of school, they find something to do, that, to me, I'm not disconnected from the community. I'm probably more connected with the community because I have more time to be. There's a lot of events that happen during the workday that, you know, you just can't attend. Um, so I think that, you know, like, I, I love what I'm doing, you know? Uh, we all have good days and bad days, but I have more good days than bad days doing what I'm doing, work with a good team, and I like the way it's run, you know? And to be very honest with you, if there was any changes to be made on council, I would say that if you have to reduce the numbers, it would be, you know, too at large. Simple, you know? I, if I, if I were to take a vacation, there would be absolutely nobody in Ward Two, you know, to do it if, if that was the case. Whereas if you have two, you can help each other out, you split the workload, all kinds of things you can do. So for a number of reasons, I, I just personally, I can't support the motion. Thank you, your worship.
So, Councillor Redmond, what can you, what, what have you got for a question?
I don't have a question now. I just have a comment. I, I heard from councillor Harris. I appreciate your comments. I'm, I'm like the deputy, actually, so, I mean, I do work on council business full-time, but you know what? I love it. So that's, it's, it's easier for me having a business for sure. So I totally appreciate, if you have a really strict schedule, this would be very hard to do. So I get that, but at the same time, man, I'm always thinking, like, who's going to leave their job for a four-year term? And that's part of why it doesn't make sense to do this. Um, it, we may need to have less representation, but I keep hearing from residents that they don't want less representation. So I would definitely want to take that to citizens, too. Um, and then the other thing is, I, I made a point to myself to commit to not voting for a raise for myself potentially ever. So, um, we've had two raises go through this council. I voted against it both times, and that's why. I always said the only way I will vote for a raise is if I am a hundred percent sure I'm on my way out and it'll go for the next council. So I can't vote for a raise anyway because I've committed to myself to not do that. Um, but you know what? Maybe the compliment does need to change. I'd like to hear more from residents, really. Um, I always say, I do have bosses. There's about eighty thousand of you, and it's really complicated because I can't keep you all happy at the same time. I know who my boss is. I respect the mayor's position, though, absolutely. But I think that it really needs to be understood who is running the show. It's the residents, and you're going to vote for whoever is going to come back here, if any but of us, next time around. Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan for a comment?
Thanks, your worship. You know, the more I think about it, the more I really appreciate this being on the agenda. We talk about the difference between working in the business and on the business all the time, and we don't nearly take enough time to work on the business and how can we get better? Um, but when I look around the current table that we have, we have entrepreneurs. We have retired folks. Maybe we have a few too many teachers. We have people who work in nonprofits. We have business owners. Like, if we wanted to look at a half-decent, maybe not perfect, but cross-section of Saint John, um, this is my third council, and by far, it's the most diverse. Can we do better? Probably. Uh, but while we don't agree, I think that's part of the beauty of this current group that we have. So I would be concerned, I, I would, I love the idea of having some folks look at what we have, and can we do better? Um, but the current group around here, I think we've done pretty good even when we don't disagree because the opinions that have been brought up, kind of like this one. I don't agree with the motion that's there, but I think this motion might push us to be better, which that discussion is important.
Councillor Harris, I'm going to hold you for just a second, and I'll say quickly myself that I don't vote unless there's a tie. But, um, with this motion, I would be, like councillor Sullivan, I would be interested in having a, maybe a committee of citizens and maybe a governance expert to even just take a look at what we're doing and then come up with some recommendations. And I, that would have to go, like, maybe in twenty-twenty-six in our work plan. That, you know, is it like councillor Sullivan says, we should be reviewing our processes every so often? So I could go along with that. Um, but I think you're right. We have done a pretty good job, and we have been just a mix that has come to council, you know, so the old-fashioned way. But I remember when they did, when, went to the ward systems, they tried to divide Saint John so that would be seventeen thousand voters per ward, and that's why the lines are what they are. Some wards are bigger than others and more geography, but it just depends. Like Ward Three, where I'm in, there's a lot of people that come in. There's twenty thousand vehicles that come in to work every day. They don't all come into Ward Three, but a lot of them do, so, but they're gone at night. They're not voters. So, uh, that's the way it was tried, they tried to just divvy up the city so that we would each have approximately that many voters at the time. So councillor Harris, I guess, I guess I'll get you to wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I mean, mission success, really. I mean, this was really like putting five pieces, some controversial, some somewhat sensible in the window for folks to talk about. So I appreciate the, the input and the feedback people gave. Um, happy for someone else to pick up the, oh, sorry, I thought you were talking to me late. You saw your weight, that's right. Um, uh, happy for someone to pick this up and to kind of move, move it on to the next, um, next phase. I think highlighting this has caused, some feedback has caused the community to think about this, what the expectation level is, what's a fair expectation from your councillor in, in various, uh, points in life. I think, to your point, deputy mayor, my, my comment about folks being retired, being disconnected from the community wasn't really captured properly. What I meant was, they don't have the same, uh, issues, and they don't have the same point of life any longer that someone like myself would. And so being able to free folks up at that level is rare in our system. So in New Brunswick, it is very rare to see this level of mixture anywhere else. So I agree with councillor Sullivan. I think we, we struck a unique, uh, mixture, I think, point in time, you know, different, different era in twenty-twenty-one even. So, um, yeah, I think if we can take this to the next point, if, if folks want to weigh in on this, happy to, happy to see that go.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor, and it's got one, two, three, four, five bullets on it. It is what the councillor read to us, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Councillor Harris, councillor Killen, opposed? Okay, motion, motion fails. Um, you've got all the nays there. City clerk, all right, thank you.
I just recorded two, uh, two yeses.
Two supporting votes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, city clerk.
Next on the agenda is a notice of motion. It's eleven point two, and it's from councillor Lowe regarding the police commission recommendation.
Okay, councillor Lowe, we're going to send this over to you, and you are going to read your motion into the minutes for this evening.
Correct. That the Saint John Police Commission be dissolved, and further that the Saint John Police Force become a department of the City of Saint John with the police chief reporting directly to the city. the city CAO.
Thank you, councillor. Next item, city clerk.
Thank you. Next is item 11.3, another notice of motion from councillor Norton entitled, uh, Citywide Encampment Abatement and Emergency Powers.
Councillor Norton, over to you to read your motion into the minutes this evening.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, just for some clarification through you to the common clerk, when reading the notice of motion, is it acceptable to read, uh, the entire recommendation, the background as well, common clerk?
Uh, yes, you can read just the motion or the full letter and with the body.
Right. Possibly, maybe I can, for the sake of the listening public and those that are in the gallery this evening, I can provide some brevity to that? Unless, Your Worship, there's an exception to that?
No, no, I was just suggesting, I go back to councillor Lowe, I didn't realize we, we, we read the whole thing back in, but did you wanna read your whole thing?
Yeah, I got-
Councillor Lowe?
That's why, that's-
Let's go back to councillor Lowe, and then I'll let him read that whole letter, and then, uh, and then we'll go to you, councillor Norton.
Yeah, uh, I won't read the whole letter. I'll read it two weeks from now. But I do wanna read some. The city of St. John currently uses a police commission governance model to oversee the St. John Police Force. If council were to change the policy, the policing governance model in St. John back to the municipal department, the St. John Police Force through the police chief would report directly to the city's CAO, who reports directly to council. This would result in council having an oversight of the police department. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, councillor. Okay, uh, councillor Norton, over to you. Your motion to be read in.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, uh, I'll read the motion and then perhaps what I can do is I'll sharpen the pencil in terms of the recommendations that, uh, that provides some background and, uh, some, I guess, some supporting subsections to, uh, to the proposed motion. Uh, the motion is Citywide Encampment Abatement and Emergency Powers from September 22nd, October 6th, 2025. Uh, that's reading it by title and the purpose is to restore public health, safety, security, lawful use of land citywide by directing the removal of encampments from city-owned and managed lands within a defined 14-day period. Activating coordinated enforcement tools for private lands, requesting parallel action by provincial and federal authorities on their lands and setting out emergency powers and safeguards consistent with law and best practice. What I will do is, for the listening public and those councillors that may or may not have had a chance to read the motion in its entirety, I'll go over some of the key points and brevity. As it relates to subsection one of the proposed motion, city-owned lands, all encampments on city property must be cleared within the 14-day period. Police, bylaw enforcement, fire, public works and outreach teams are directed to coordinate removals. As it relates to subsection two, private lands, if property owners request it or legal threats, thresholds are met, the city can use existing bylaws, dangerous and/or unsightly premises, zoning, trespass laws to force removal, and court injunctions can be sought if situations persist. For section three, as it relates to provincial, federal and crown lands, municipality or, as it's referenced in the motion, the city will request that provincial, federal and agency-owned lands like the Port of St. John near these removals and enter agreements for cooperation. Section four, emergency powers, if conditions persist and immediate danger, council may declare, uh, a state of local emergency, which is within our sole authority as a governing council, given the city manager broad powers to remove encampments immediately, even on non-city lands, while respecting charter rights. Section five, lawful decampment plan, before any removal, the city must show that adequate shelter alternatives exist and are offered in a compassionate and humane way. Outreach is trauma-informed and accessible, belongings are stored and retrievable, sites are cleaned and remediated and handed and hardened against re-entry, and public updates and communication are provided. Section six, the bylaw changes clarify that tents and temporary habitation are not permitted use under zoning unless in licensed campgrounds or approved shelters, and add a formal definition of encampment. As it relates to reporting from the municipality to the public and to council, staff must provide a public report by October 20th outlining what was done, referrals made and legal action, costs and recommendations. And as it relates to the delegated authority, the CAO or the city manager and city solicitor are empowered to sign agreements, hire contractors, secure sites and go to court. I have been asked about timelines, and the timelines that I've articulated within the motion are September 22nd, council adopts a plan published and outreach starts if council sees in its favor to move this motion forward. From September 22nd to the 29th, priority removals and fire and life safety first and property storage begins. September 30th to October 5th, complete removals enforced on private federal lands and site hardening will commence. On October 6th, the deadline for removals and staff begin compiling the report. In summary, what this means is the city is moving to clear encampment citywide in a two-week window as it's detailed in this motion. It emphasizes legal compliance and only enforce if shelter alternatives exist, belongings are handled and outreach is done properly. It expands authority to private, provincial and federal lands, not just city property, and it introduces potential. And I would underscore potential emergency powers if situations are deemed hazardous. And it signals a strong will of this council if it sees fit, uh, visible encampments are eliminated but legally safeguarded. Thank you, Your Worship, for the opportunity to read in the motion.
Keep, uh, count, thank you councillor Norton. Keep clicking off my microphone, because when I do, the councillor who's speaking comes up on the screen for everyone to take a look at, so. All right, next item, city clerk.
Next is item 12.1, an update by the chief administrative officer on select catalytic projects and advocacy.
Okay, CAO, over to you for your verbal report to us this evening.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening. Uh, for the catalytic projects update, I'll provide an update on three projects, starting first with the new public schools. Uh, the province Anglophone South School District and the city continue planning work on the new South End and North End schools. The North End school work continues, including the erecting of structural steel, and the South End school site work is continuing. On our city capital project, uh, plan, we have work that's supporting the South End School reconstruction along Broad Street is now completed, uh, or substantially complete St. James Street. The contractor started underground infrastructure and they have a substantial completion date of, in October. We're also, uh, proposing intersection projects in the 2026 capital program that will be before council, uh, this fall, uh, to support the North End School, uh, for Safety for All. Switching now to affordable housing, so as it relates to grants, in August, we issued, uh, grants for nine projects and, uh, two projects, uh, will receive their funding in September as of this point. Uh, we have a new intake for the Affordable Housing Grant Program that will be launched this fall, and, uh, soft grants program for $25,000, uh, is also open. Uh, $25,000 per project for the Rapid Housing Initiative and the Bear Green Residence that's down, um, in the South End, a joint initiative between Kaleidoscope Social Impact, the city and CMHC. Good progress continues and that project is scheduled for substantial completion in early 2026. Uh, regarding the Housing Accelerator Fund Program, the dashboard that we have on our website is updated with the latest data as of August 31st. Uh, we're currently at the midpoint of our 2026 housing supply target timeline, and the good news is that we are representing, uh, 66.9% of the overall goal, so we're exceeding our target at this point in time, and hopefully the good construction and growth does continue. By way of the Housing Accelerator Fund Program updates, RFP for e-permitting to expedite the permitting process, um, the RFP is closed and, and proposal evaluations will commence. As far as the North End Secondary Plan, the next phase of in-person community engagement, we'll share outcomes of the visioning exercise and present draft concepts. This is scheduled for late October or early November, and a draft plan is expected by the end of this year. And lastly, regarding the Funday Key Project, just a couple of, uh, items remaining on that one, the stage enhancement work continues as we make final enhancements to that, and the new deck located between the Ale House and Market Square, uh, will be wrapping up as well once we get the final materials. And that concludes the update, Your Worship. Subject to any questions?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? The CAO on his catalytic project update? Not seeing anyone, uh, so I'll take a motion to receive for information, the deputy and councillor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Thank you. Next is item 12.2, an update by the CAO on strategic initiatives plan.
Okay, CAO is gonna head up to the podium to do this one for us, we'll have some slides up there for us.
Good evening, once again. I'll, uh, walk you through our update, um, council, as it relates to our 2025 strategic plans and this initiative status update for the, uh, month of August. The criteria used in the creation of the initiatives and the work plan for 2025 is as shown on the screen. Many of the initiatives come from the city of St. John 10-year strategic plan, uh, council motions or, uh, driven by operational requirements. Terms of prioritization, once the criteria is complete, we give consideration to the prioritization. First, the initiatives that are transformational and catalytic growth initiatives that I'll go through, and then I'll move along to the service area initiatives that are more service area focused, uh, and involve service area resources mainly and limited to, uh, broad service area involvement. And then there's a capital program initiatives where we have our entire, entire program for 2025. I won't walk you through all those, but that's a separate $55 million capital program. And, uh, in terms of status, so, I'd like to run through, there, there are 40 separate, um, initiatives that together have a total of 83 individual deliverables that we're executing on, and, um, I'll provide a, a summary in the end in terms of where we are statistically overall tracking. So the first group, here are the initiatives that are transformational and catalytic growth initiatives. Uh, the first initiative is expediting the delivery of Affordable Housing Action Plan through the Housing Accelerator Fund. So starting first with the North End Secondary Plan, Phase One, what we heard report is complete, Phase Two is underway, as I just briefly updated, which includes the development of the draft secondary plan in consultation with the North End, um, Advisory Committee, that's ongoing. For Housing Concierge Service, uh, in March, we hosted, uh, successfully hosted a developer's symposium. Uh, for the award of the Housing Accelerator Grants, the program development is complete and operational, and grants valued at nearly $3 million, uh, with using federal funds were awarded in May of this year. And lastly, on this slide, unlocking gentle density, this project is CMHC's, um, city's role to promote their design catalog and streamline the process for developers to choose the use of the pre-designed CMHC catalog. So that timeline's been extended to December to accommodate CMHC's catalog changes. Continuing along with expediting the delivery of Affordable Housing Action Plan through the Housing Accelerator Fund, uh, we're leveraging our available land and the approval of our new real estate pro- policy and GIS tool, both which were completed earlier this year, to accelerate our permitting process. As I touched on, we have our electronic permitting, uh, the RFP that closed and procurement evaluation that'll get underway. Regarding the govern- governance reform, it's on track and ongoing, moving forward with implementation plan for the housing secretariat model, and, uh, CMHC recognizes the decision, and, uh, the implementation timeline for that is April of 2026. In terms of the implementation for the Housing for All Strategy, um, of course, here tonight, uh, but the first green zone, as we all know, in August, second green zone is planned for December, um, of this year. Bylaw amendments and implementation of red zones, of course, we'll be discussing shortly, and the, um, uh, for the creation of the expanded outreach team, who's here to join us tonight, um, that recommendation was approved earlier as part of the consent agenda for our extended outreach team, and we've secured $3.4 million to support the Housing for All Strategy. This initiative, um, this next initiative is also catalytic project, uh, the creation of the new comprehensive recreation facility, and great progress has been made on this. So the land is secured, we're gonna close on that, uh, expected this fall. Financial model will be presented to council by the end of 2025. Energy model is complete and schematic design is at 60%. Uh, we're evaluating the governance structure, and if viability assessment is positive, we'll begin work on a, on agreements. Um, shifting now to another catalytic project, as I just touched on, the South End and North End School, I won't spend any more time on those, given the update just provided. And we have been active on advocacy for fiscal reform and property tax reform, as council knows, uh, Fiscal Reform Bill 33 has received royal, royal assent, and we're expecting confirmation of what this means for St. John either this month or next, so looking forward to that from the province. Property tax reform process commenced in August. As council is fully aware, we continue to advocate for the heavy industrial property tax to be transferred to municipalities. Uh, we've met with those municipalities who'd benefit from this. We've also have letters of support from the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission and from the Funday Region Service Commission and others. Uh, we also held the social media campaign to encourage residents to fill out the provincial property tax survey and express their support for this. So we look forward to seeing what the outcomes are in that process. And, um, shifting now to the comprehensive parking study with a focus for the South Central Peninsula, we're expecting a draft of that report in, uh, Q3 of this year. And expanding the Spruce Lake Industrial Park, another catalytic priority, the rezoning was approved, Phase One of the EIA, uh, determination approved just a couple of weeks ago, and we continue to work on the land transfer. For improvements at Sims Corner, a working group continues to meet with the various stakeholders to provide input. And, um, the procuring and implementing of a modern ERP system, a massive undertaking for us at the city, uh, that will integrate our business processes and improve decision-making. It's a multi-year project, we're evaluating submissions, um, that we receive through a RFP, call for proposals, and, uh, implementation and planning will start, will, um, will start once a project is awarded, either in late 2025 or in early 2026. On the corporatization of St. John Energy, um, this one you'll see is red, and this is one that, uh, is really out of our hands now to an extent and is with the province, and we really need their support to move forward, the enabling of the corporatization. And we really need their support to move forward, the enabling of the corporatization. And the next one is the Modern University City Safety Program. That's also a very large undertaking. Progress is happening, however, will require a bit of additional time on this one. So training modules are in progress, are in the process of being acquired. A rollout plan is being created. S O P creation's underway and training will commence late in the year. Initial required manager safety training program has commenced. And there's a draft policy underway on contractor safety management. That we expect to have completed prior to the end of this year. And the comprehensive ten-year human resources strategy inclusive of succession planning, employee recognition. Employee performance and other components is complete, along with the implementation plan and initiatives are underway. Implement the two thousand twenty five Diversity Equity and Inclusion Action Plan. To achieve goals and objectives in our D E I policy that was approved by council. Q one training is completed for, for all of the senior leadership team. And we're working towards mandatory employee training. Also, D E I champions have been designated and planning is underway for two separate D E I events. And moving on to the service area initiatives. First, the Arts and Culture Policy. So we hired our new Arts and Culture Coordinator, Kelly Green. We're happy to have her on board, and this project is on track to commence later this year. East Side Community Support, new program for East Side, Saint John is on, we have the new manager on board. And the needs assessment's underway, and recommendations are to come early in Q four. We're targeting so that we can make that as part of the overall budget program or process. A lot of work has been done on this, and it's active on Shape Your City. Shape Your City is a survey relating to this that will be open until mid-September. City Market, there's a fair bit of work going on there. We're accelerating the implementation of the approved actions. And the City Market Strategic Plan Governance Review is ongoing with recommendations expected by the end of this year. Our City Market is going to celebrate its hundred and fiftieth anniversary in two thousand twenty six. So we've submitted funding requests tied to that. And lastly, there's a lot of construction work that's active in the City Market. Or that will get started in two thousand twenty six, subject to our capital budget approval. And next is to implement the approved actions of the Central Peninsula Secondary Plan. The first five-year plan has been completed. The implementation for the next five years is being developed and will involve consultation with the External Advisory Committee. Urban Development Incentive Review is underway and scheduled for council's consideration in December of this year. The conceptual design is completed for Rainbow Park. Funding is being recommended as a draft. It's part of the draft two thousand twenty six capital budget. And the RFP has been issued and review is underway at this time in transforming the, the next project. In terms of transforming the South Market Street into an animated pedestrian lane right. The city scope of work is now completed. The other portion that is adjacent to ninety nine King Street will be done as part of that development. And then across from City Hall, landscaping work is nearing completion, as we will assess options for that site. Moving to the continued implementation of the inclusion and anti-racism initiatives. An emergency services awareness campaign is completed. And the quote unquote, our region or home campaign is also completed. For the next phase, discussions are ongoing for the regional immigration strategy. For the multi-year project of consolidating operations. Into the Transit and Ross Avenue facilities, fleet has moved out of Ross Avenue into the Transit Garage. And Public Works Garage at Borishead Road will be fully vacated by the end of this year. Which will then look at real estate opportunities for that asset. We continue to collaborate with the port and other stakeholders. In terms of continuing to improve the public interface between portlands and city lands. And a good example is the Broad Street renewal that occurred this summer. And work will continue to identify other areas. A number of deliverables have been underway to reduce the use of salt. While maintaining service levels, so we're taking a number of actions in terms of training, replacing brine production units. And improving the functionality of our fleet and development of S O P before this winter hits. And getting close to the end, planting of a thousand trees and streetscapes by, in green spaces. This one should actually be in our strategic initiatives because it is part of our strategic plan. We applied for, secured the eighty percent funding for this initiative. So, so far, the city this year has planted a hundred and thirty two trees. We've also awarded a tender for the remainder of the tree planting. That we'll see a third of the trees are planted this year, followed by the rest of the trees over the subsequent two years of the funding program. We're going to develop and implement municipal deep energy retrofit program for municipalities. We secured funding, have engaged a consultant, and work is underway on that. As part of our transforming transit plan, work continues with the vendor to implement electronic fares. The CAD A V L Strategic Mapping is beginning with a mini fleet installation. And so happy to report that, that transit experience will improve with that. For the fifteen-year strategic plan for the fire service review and action plan, the team has been established. And the pillars and structure for the fire strategic. Plan. Has been approved by Public Safety Committee in late May. And work is currently underway to look at community risk assessment and other initiatives. And regarding Move S J Actions to Improve Safety and Accessibility for All Staffed. Worked with the consultant in the spring, final drafts for road classification and final report are created. The planned adoption of phase three of Move S J by council, we're forecasting by the end of this year. Regarding implementing Move S J. Movement Strategy to Improve Quality of Life, there are a number of initiatives that we're working on that are listed on the screen. And as part of our upgrade to the current designated accessible parking spaces to meet recognized industry standards. The standards for on-street parking space has been finalized with consultation. Saint John Ability Advisory Committee is working on recommending which spaces should be the focus for our work. And space upgrades will commence this fall. And we're planning for completion in Q two of two thousand twenty six. There are also improvements that have been made as part of our ongoing capital street reconstruction projects. And on this slide as well, we also have the Saint John Water Ten Year Financial Plan that was completed and approved. And in working jointly with our consultant, we've been completing our enterprise risk management project. To create a formal risk matrix and risk assessment of the top eleven risks for our organization. We also completed, the finance team completed the internal audit at Market Square. And implementation of recommendation requires ongoing contract management. As it relates to ratifying the fire collective agreement, process is ongoing for negotiations with the outside workforce. That was completed with ratification in June, and the new agreement is now fully executed. And I think just a couple more. Creation of the five-year capital plan with the strategic plan will inform the two thousand twenty six capital program. Five-year capital budget was presented to Finance Committee, and we're planning to present that to council by year end. Staff have been active in terms of also seeking external funding for Saint John Water. By applying to the federal fund, federal government for the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund. And we're also applying to the province. Building of the Main Street Active Transportation Corridor has been a large undertaking. We needed highway usage permits. We got those and then awarded tender to the project and it's nearing completion. And continued implementation this year of the twelve traffic calming projects in accordance with the traffic calming policy. All twelve locations will be completed by the end of two thousand twenty five. And to enhance security at city facilities. Work has been underway to improve the customer service entrance downstairs. And that work is designed and will look to complete that in two thousand twenty six. And lastly, for continued improvements, the expansion of Harbor Passage. So this summer, we extended along Broad Street and in West Saint John next year, from Riverview Avenue to Riverview Drive. Proposals for design are being evaluated and will be awarded at the end of this year. So that we can get construction started in the spring of next year. That'll be an exciting addition to Harbor Passage. So in summary, we have twenty five percent of our initiatives completed, sixty two percent that have work underway. And are expected to meet our completion targets. Eight percent that will require additional time to complete, one percent that's outside our control. And two percent that require a scope change, so. Thank you. I know this is a lot to go through. Just want to be, prior to wrapping up, I want to thank the entire team and council to achieve this work. Requires great focus, commitment, hard work. And it's great to see the progress being made. So big thank you to the stellar team. And I take great pride in terms of advancing the initiatives before the City of Saint John. And with that, Your Worship, the recommendation is to receive and file this update.
Thank you, C O. Great job on that. I'll have to echo your comments and thank the team as well. There's a lot of green checkmarks in there or a lot of green arrows. So it is a lot of work. I think I counted forty initiatives, and a lot of them have more than one deliverable. So it's, it's an impressive piece of work. Got a few questions or comments. Counselor Harris is up first. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just an observation. I think we've been doing a presentation on the strategic initiatives like this. For about three years now, four years. There's a lot in these strategic initiatives that just sort of have to happen, or they're part of a plan's rollout. And I think it would be helpful to see those on more of a, more of a dashboard basis. And to focus, I think, your engagement here, C O McGovern, on, on the, the areas of ambiguity. Where there isn't a lot of understanding. And so that leads me to my question. One of the things you didn't touch on in the, because your catalytic updates is about projects. We did set, council has set some strategic advocacy catalytic projects as well, or catalytic advocacy projects, I guess we called them. And so I'm curious about some of those and how they dovetail here. Because I know that, for example, on Growth Committee, we've talked about taxing vacancy around our affordable housing plan. Because right now, you board your house up, or if you're midway through a permit for two years, you get that forgiveness by the province on your tax rate. And it really doesn't reflect the level of service that still exists there, vacant land, vacant buildings. And they get preferential treatment by that tax code, which doesn't support the housing initiative that we have. So I know we've talked about that. I'd be curious, what has been the discussion with the province? Around permitting that at the municipal level for us to be able to do that, not just taxing vacancy. I know we've talked about Airbnbs, regulating them, either getting them to pay into the levy that hotels and motels and other facilities have to. And trying to limit the exposure of Airbnbs while we have people who are looking for housing. And then finally, that tax, these are kind of part of three that came out of Growth Committee that we've talked around, these catalytic advocacy pieces. That tax sale expropriation process, which can take seven years from the time when somebody stops paying their taxes. To the point where the government says, okay, it's too far now. We're taking your building from you because you're not in compliance. Where, where have we gotten there? Have those conversations happened? Because I think when we come here to open, those pieces where we just don't have clarity around what's happening, what's the delay? Who's, who are we waiting for? Who, who said no? And now we're kind of stuck. I think that was really nice to see that on the Saint John Energy one, because it's like we're dead-ended until our M L As want to step up and quarterback something in the ledge. But these other ones would be my questions. Where are we at with some of those?
Yeah, it's a good question. Like, in terms of the taxing vacant lands, that's something that has been an advocacy item of, of this council. As you know, we've had discussions with ministers, letters have been written and submitted to the province. And, you know, we continue to check back on that one, and I understand it's going to be considered as part of the property tax reform. So it's kind of in that bucket of items to consider. On tax sale exemption or expropriation process, I don't have an update on that one at this point in time. I know that there was reform going on in D T I, but I, I don't have knowledge of the specifics of it at this point in time. Thank you.
Counselor Redmond, did you have a question on the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment, really. I mean, great work, C O McGovern and staff. But, you know, I, I just wanted to mention for the public that, you know, every time you do this, I go on the strat plan. I take a look at what's been done, what's now, you know, what are we going through now and what's coming in the future? Of course, there's still things coming like getting seventy five percent of the sidewalks cleared in the wintertime. And water metering, all these sort of things are coming up. So, but this time, when I looked at it, I was like, oh, my gosh, like, it's just been so much work that's been done since we've been sitting here. And this update is a lot, like a lot of stuff actually, like getting near completion or at completion. Something like Main Street is taking so long, right? So that's going to feel really good for you and, and for staff. And then I just thought, I really need a little plug because we really need tax reform. Like, I just can't say it enough. So I always think from a sales point of view, what's in it for the province? Right? What's in it for them? I, we know what's in it for us, but what's in it for them? Well, I think that Saint John has always been the most untapped territory in the province. So you help Saint John grow, and I think you're going to help your provincial wallet grow. And that's, that's where I sit on that. I'm, I'm hopeful that the whole government's going to do it way before election time, like provincial election time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'm normally a ninety nine percent glass full kind of guy. But I would like to talk a little bit about the one percent, which is the red, which both the other counselors have touched on. It's Saint John Energy Reform. We've had two premiers stand in front of us in this council chamber and say, yep, very doable. It kind of makes sense. We should move it forward. We've had two premiers say fiscal reform from municipalities, it's right around the corner. Give us target dates, and the target dates were not met. What we did get was a freeze on property assessment. My older brother, who's a very educated and wise fellow, once said. Gary, you know why people bang their heads against walls? Because it feels so good when you stop. With all of the energy we are using banging our head against the provincial wall. At what point in time do we stop and say, you know what, we got stuff to do in Saint John. This is going nowhere. Let's use the energy to continue to do things in Saint John. We've done, you, you and the mayor and our team have done great work in rallying the other municipalities. Having folks write letters and come together. And we got a property assessment freeze and another date down the line. And you even used the term, and it's not our term, but it's really frustrating to hear. Two different governments, two different parties use the same line of, that's coming with fiscal reform. But fiscal reform is always a year away. It's, it's, no offense to the contractors. But it's like the contractor says, two weeks, that'll be done in two weeks. When do we stop banging our head against the wall?
Good question.
That is a sixty four thousand dollar question, isn't it? Yeah. That, that, that is a we question. That's a collective question of when do we have that discussion and say. You know, we're going to head in a different direction or put our energies elsewhere. I, I, I still hold out hope, though.
All right. I don't see any other questions for you, C O, so I will take a motion to receive for information. Counselor Loewen, Counselor Norton on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item twelve point three, Housing for All Strategy Update.
Okay. Before I pass this one over to the C O, just to introduce, I've just had a couple of little things to, I want to say about it. And as I mentioned earlier, our Housing for All Strategy was adopted in July of twenty And as I mentioned earlier, our Housing For All Strategy was adopted in July of 2024. These have been challenging times. Over the last four years, we've seen an increase in homelessness and increased of cost of food, 22%. Seen an increase in cost of rents, 34.7%. And after months in the making, we're trying to deliver what we hope will be a successful, thoughtful path forward for this complex issue. It's a local solution, a St. John developed and worked on. And we're working on the back end of the breakdown of many systems that add to homelessness. We want to move people into transitional housing. There are many gaps in the system that are still contributing to this frontline challenge. And we need to work together with the province on key issues. We are all advocating for systemic change to be led by the province. People are being discharged from provincial facilities in St. John, like hospitals, correctional centers, et cetera, et cetera, into homelessness. So they know they don't have a place to go, but they're being discharged anyway. St. John has several amenities. And we have a tertiary care center for the province. And so people come from all over the province to be serviced, a lot of times in St. John. So we need to prevent the inflow of people into homelessness. While at the same time, we need time with supportive and transitional housing. We need to help people out of homelessness. We need the province to step in and solve some of the issues for us. We need detox beds. We need mental health supports. We need the creation of institutions or facilities. We need more housing. We need the province to make sure temporary housing is being case managed to move individuals along the housing spectrum into more permanent housing. We need metrics to measure our success. And we need to link the many services that are located in St. John together so that everybody's got the same goal and moving forward. So, like I said, we're hoping that this will come across as a, you know, supportive, thoughtful path forward. I always say we're flying this plane as we build it. There's no playbook for it. We're doing the best that we can. And so I'm going to pass it over to the CAO for the introduction.
Thank you, worship. You know, I just want to express as staff, we understand the urgency to improve the situation for everyone. The plan before council for your consideration tonight has, you know, Respecy Housing For All Strategy. As council knows, that was adopted just over a year ago. We're proud that thanks to the Housing For All Strategy and the human rights-based approach being taken, that we are the only municipality in New Brunswick that has been awarded the $3.4 million in federal funding. In the spring, of course, we were able to quickly make use of that and executed an agreement with the 12 Neighbors Community, Inc. to get started on the Courtenor-style homes that were built and just opened over a month ago. The federal funding is what's funded that construction of the green zones and also funding the operation of the green zones. And it will also fund the expanded outreach team. The tender, which, as I mentioned, was awarded earlier with four additional resources. We're taking a housing-first approach for housing with 18 units created in December at Somerset Acres. It's been successfully operated by Fresh Start. Sen Sen, 27 units just over a month ago, being operated by Neighborly Homes, and 27 more units coming in December. So we're following our plan in terms of housing. But there are more needs. So with housing needs well underway, we want to shift now to implementation of the red zones following that human rights-based approach that we'll present on this evening. And as your worship has mentioned, you know, the challenge does require all levels of government to continue to work together. No one government or department can address the crisis before all of us. So we've been working together with the province in terms of making some good headway on some files. But there's more to be done. And that's why, in addition to rolling out the red zones that's recommended tonight, we have the four recommended city actions and the eight recommended provincial actions. And with that, I'll now turn it over to Kara Coes, our Senior Manager for Community Support Services. And both she and our Director of Growth and Community Support Services, David Dobelstein, will deliver the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, CAO McGovern, your worship, members of council. Here tonight to discuss the Housing For All Strategy red zone implementation. At committee of the whole last Friday, the CAO was directed to present the Housing For All Update this evening, as mentioned. And we wanted to start off with noting two milestones that we had in the last two years. So the Housing For All Vision Statement was adopted by council in 2023 of December. Every resident within the city of St. John is entitled to a safe, supported, and sustainable home. In the spirit of the right to adequate housing articulated in the 1948 United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the city of St. John wishes for its residents to live in security, peace, and dignity, regardless of the home's permanence. The city of St. John's goal is to provide safe community spaces for access by all its residents as well, while supporting individuals as they access housing that meets their specific needs. And then in July 2024, as previously mentioned, our Housing For All Strategy was also adopted by council. In February 2025, the city received a commitment of $3.4 million in funding via agreement with the province of New Brunswick and the government of Canada to implement the Federal Unsheltered Homelessness and Encampments Initiative in St. John. This funding from the program is being used to accelerate the city's Housing For All Strategy and to implement initiatives such as the establishment of the green zones, which are a new transitional housing to provide safe, warm, secure places to live for over 54 individuals currently experiencing homelessness. This funding also enables the city to offer enhanced outreach services and to assist individuals living in encampments to get into housing. An overview of the Housing For All Strategy in brief. The St. John Strategy identifies our community's coordinated response to addressing homelessness over the next three years. It's a person-centered and human rights approach. And the strategy advances our shared vision of every resident having a safe, supported, and sustainable home. We have four strategic priorities with the outcome to provide safe community spaces for access by all residents while supporting individuals as they access housing that meet their specific needs. And we will strive to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring. Our first objective, coordination and governance. Our in-progress, ongoing highlights items that are, whether they're quarterly, monthly, or annually, so that it's something that's always going to be ongoing. So for example, with our service agreements, as mentioned earlier, we entered into one with 12 neighbors in May to operate and construct the units at our green zones. In-progress on track are things that we're working on currently with a deadline and we're on track to be able to meet that as we move forward. For emergency supports, our on-house sites, like to mention with the acres, highlighted in green. It's our Somerset site. It is a, it's off of, in the North End. And it stands for Advancing Community with Respect, Empowerment, and Support. So it's an initiative that the partners through different partnerships with the levels of government as well as community agencies have implemented. And it has been open for just over eight months now with lots of success and positive outcomes. I'll note that there's two items here that are in place and that we're experiencing some challenges as we've heard from community with public safety concerns. We're just working through what that can look like with the different levels of government and the community to advance that forward as well. Prevention, education, and safety. We have a lot of in-progress on track and in-progress as well as in-progress ongoing. So we've been really busy with the team internally. And also mentioning with the strategy itself, it's not just city-led initiatives. It's city partnerships. It's the provincial. It's also our community agencies. And it's a live document that's ongoing and updated as we learn and proceed forward. And you can access it on our Shape Your City as well to take a look at the full details. And then again, our last objective for housing, Acres Project is listed here as well. As we were putting the strategy together, the Acres Project was something that we were in discussions. And we found at that time it fell into two categories, and we're listing it twice. Excuse me. And we've also listed the use of the CCANS. As we know, they were previously at a location uptown to support safe, dry spaces for our unhoused. The CCANS are no longer on that site as the property is in preparation for a new housing project. And they were decommissioned and are for sale. An update for our green zone, as mentioned, Egbert Street welcomed 27 individuals for August 1st into their units. And the quote on the screen is a testimonial from one of the participants. And the lovely picture is a mural that was done on the outside of the units as well. Our second green zone for Thorn Avenue is underway with the expectation of December 1st to welcome 27 more individuals. So site prep is happening. Homes are currently under construction. And onsite assembly of homes will begin in November. Wanted to provide a snapshot as well of what the homelessness numbers looked like over the last few years from May 2023 to July 2025. Noting that, as you see, the first note here for numbers was at 133 chronically homeless. And currently, at the end of July, 223 are currently homeless. Breaking it down for the month of July, in total, 410 total individuals experiencing homelessness for at least one day in July. And 223, as noted on the previous slide, individuals experiencing chronic homelessness in July for at least one day. While we're looking at this snapshot, I also want to share that there's three adult emergency shelters that have 127 beds and new temporary transitional housing. Or 18 units at Somerset Acres, as previously mentioned, 27 units at Egbert Street Green Zone, and another 27 units coming December 1st. For our encampment relocation response, we are taking a person-centered, compassionate, and rights-based approach, respecting that as an actual individual living in an encampment. Over the last couple of years, we've been working with our community agencies and our outreach team and province to be able to implement and work through how a relocation response could look. We've approached it as a three-step approach, whereas the outreach team would visit the encampment and speak with the individual, letting them know that we need to relocate, sharing whatever reason that happens to be, and has a discussion as to where an alternate location could be for that person. Step two, they revisit. If the person hasn't voluntarily relocated or if they're still trying to figure out where to go, outreach team touches base again, works with that individual, and provides any supports that are necessary. Step three, relocation, is taken. Sometimes the city of police or police of St. John, as well as other agencies supporting wraparound services for the individual, are identified and a visit would take place with a multidisciplinary team to help relocate those individuals. And I'd like to mention, over the last couple of years, as we were working through this three-step approach, that approximately 94% of the time, most individuals voluntarily relocate. It's not as often that we would need to engage a multidisciplinary team. Other properties that we wanted to mention as well, and when we're doing relocation response, it's not always the city of St. John property that we're relocating from. We are currently working on potential agreements with the school district as well as Department of Transportation, Infrastructure, and Railway. We're doing this as, from our experience over the last couple of years, if we receive a call from the school, for example, we'll have the outreach team respond to that call and work with the individual to relocate. As we move forward to implement the red zone policy, we want to make sure that these conversations continue and that our process is a success as we move forward. And that's where we're working through what these agreements can look like formalized as opposed to the verbal agreement. And then if, for any private property owners, the city has been working with those owners, whether it's in a red zone or not, to get consent to help work through that process of relocating an encampment off of their property as well. As mentioned, we have the award tonight of the outreach team for new expanded outreach teams. So we've been working with Fresh Start Services ongoing as the outreach team is on behalf of the province of New Brunswick. And with the funding received, we're able to extend and expand that team by adding four more additional outreach staff to further support the community, the homelessness community. And with this, there will be a new expanded schedule of seven days per week for 12-hour shifts. And we've also identified some response times based on those red zones and high-risk priority areas. So for example, a rapid response within 30 minutes, quick response same day, and standard response within two to three days. And I know that the red zone map, as part of the presentation, has been viewed over the weekend. And wanting to note that the buffers within the red zone map are part of the standard response time. They're not connected to what they're buffering. And then with any relocation of encampments, we also provide support for cleanups of that spaces as well as cleanups for residents that are living in encampments. So the city organizes cleanups of encampments on public property when they've been vacated or with assistance with the outreach team if they're occupied and the occupant would like some assistance. And also mentioning that, as part of the plan, we're also providing garbage pickup at some of our sites. Or if there is a cleanup, we will arrange for public works to go through and pick up some debris as well. With private lands, the city will provide guidance for property owners so that they can keep their property clean. And we'll also, if need be, take action against property owners if they are noncompliant with that. I'd like to invite Director Dobelstein up to continue with the presentation.
So red zones, there's been a lot of conversation about what they might be, what they will not be. So tonight, we're releasing to the public and for discussion here, council, what the intention of the city would be for red zones. So red zones, simply put, are properties that contain one or more of the following uses. So it could be a school, daycare, early learning center, licensed after-school program, special needs center. I won't read through the whole list. You can see it here. And then tents, encampments, or temporary shelters will not be permitted in a red zone. So we're going to talk about where those red zones are located. But generally speaking, red is where we don't want to see people sleeping outdoors. We're going to talk about other locations, but there's certain areas that present a higher risk profile to the public, particularly children or vulnerable populations. You can tell that by looking at the list. Schools make sense. In fact, some of this that we've been doing already, as Kara mentioned, there's been relocations that are happening. Get a call from school. We didn't wait to formally notify the public that a schoolyard was a red zone. But de facto, it has been. We're now informing everyone where those areas are going to be, so everybody knows what they are. The red zones are also going to include buffers around some of those specific properties that have those uses. As you recognize, for instance, our proposal is that there's a 200-meter buffer around schools. Because we know that kids walk to schools, and it's a higher risk profile if they're running into an encampment or if they're finding other needles or other things that are sometimes associated with encampments, but not necessarily in and around the school. So we're ensuring that there's less risk to the public and higher risk members of the public who might otherwise run into a camp. And so that's why we're creating these buffers. So 200-meter buffers around schools, daycares, after-school programs, also around our shelters. You've noticed, I'm sure the public's noticed, there seems to be clustering that happens around our emergency shelters. We're also trying to ensure that our green zones, which are housing, are viewed as being good neighbors. So it's another reason why we don't want to see tents being set up in and around those green zones. Part of the reason, too, is there's going to be four different courtyards. And we're still working with 12 neighbors and the community council on homelessness on determining like, who could still live in courtyards? Are some of them going to be a dry courtyard where drugs wouldn't be permitted? For instance, if someone leaves rehab and is trying to stay in a drug-free environment, it can be really difficult for them to go in an environment where there's drugs present or alcohol present. So we're still working through those. But that's part of the reason why we wouldn't want to see tents around green zones. We'd want a 100-meter buffer around playgrounds and splash pads, a 30-meter buffer around the city's sports fields and parks. These are named parks, parks that are officially named by the city, as well as active sports fields. We're not necessarily talking about decommissioned sports fields or decommissioned playgrounds. There'd also be a buffer around highways and railways. We know those are higher-risk areas. We've heard as well, you know, you don't want somebody to get injured wandering onto a highway or a railway. We've also seen fires in and around our highways, which pose a challenge for public safety to get access to. And then there'd be a five-meter buffer around Harbor Passage, not just the walkway itself. So yellow zones. There's been some talk about yellow zones. So what are yellow zones? So these yellow zones are being established by the city as a temporary and emergency response to our housing crisis. They're not intended to become permanent. It's a recognition that we're still working towards getting more housing options available. And the yellow zones eventually need to be eliminated as we get more provincial housing, institutional, affordable solutions all across the entire spectrum and all throughout the city. So as Kara mentioned- So as Cara mentioned, and we heard from the C O and the mayor, we've adopted a human rights approach for a housing for all strategy. We also recognize that unhoused persons can't be forcibly relocated or evicted from their tents, temporary shelters or encampments. Sections seven of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms establishes those rights. And courts have found that if you move too quickly, or on some of those bullet points, whether if someone's forcibly evicted, evicted in haste, if they're not treated with dignity, or and this is a key one, if they don't have an alternate place to go that adequately meets their shelter needs, you know, there's a chance that those risks are being violated, right? So the city, in partnership with senior levels of government, our frontline agencies, we've been working towards providing meaningful alternatives. So those include green zones. You heard from Misco's. You know, we have 54 new new units coming online. We have new units at Somerset Acres. There's more affordable housing coming online this next year that you're all aware of at this horseshoe. We also have a number of shelter beds. And we know there's dozens and dozens right now, maybe the public doesn't know, of free beds available. So there's a balancing act right now. We want to make sure that people are getting access to these beds and being informed that those are available, green zones are available and those units are coming online. So generally, simply put, a yellow zone is any part of the city that is neither a red zone or a green zone. So if it's not red, it's not green, it's yellow, simply put, right? So unless otherwise prohibited, an individual can sleep or erect a tent anywhere in a yellow zone, provided they have the consent of the landlord. Right now, when we work with the outreach team to go around yellow zones and so we're checking in on individuals who may have moved from a red zone to a yellow zone, which is, we're hoping obviously they'll move into housing first, but if they choose that they don't want to take housing and they still want to remain in a tent, but yellow zones will be that option, an alternative option for them. We're not going to check, you know, have you checked in with the landlord? We're assuming it's tacit consent, but the landlord can contact the city or the outreach team if they have challenges with that. So it doesn't mean that we're forcing individuals, all of a sudden you need to have tents in your backyard because the city's map says your house is a yellow zone. That's not what this means. It just means there are certain areas of the city that are red where we don't want tents or encampments to be. Generally speaking, everywhere else is yellow. And what we're saying in this slide is the city is not going to take any action with respect to tents that are erected on yellow zones where the city owns vacant land, as long as they adhere to the criteria and site standards for a yellow zone. We're going to talk about what those site standards are as well. So generally speaking, what this means is the city is going to make available dozens and dozens of vacant lands, L P lands. If people choose, those will be available, provided they're in yellow zones and provided they follow the other criteria. Now, there's some exceptions here, and I recognize the text is is small. There might be some areas on the map that would quote-unquote be yellow that we still might work with the outreach team and inform an individual that isn't an appropriate place to be tenting, right? So it could be actively being used for city business or the public. It's a parking lot for a sports field. We want to make sure that there's not conflict between the public and someone who might want to live there. It could, the site could be an active negotiation or pending sale, right? So that's a conversation for council, that could be a reason why we would say we couldn't have a tent in a certain area. If there's an unreasonable and repeated public nuisance, right? So if there's a yellow zone that's set up, or there's yellow zones all over the city, but if there's a specific tent or a couple of tents that are set up in a in a yellow zone, and they for whatever reason, they seem to be causing repeated disturbances to the neighbors. Obviously, if we're going to take a human rights and compassionate approach first, we're going to have the outreach team will speak to them, see if we can solve the issue. But if it comes recurrent and we realize there is no solving it, it's just the wrong location, we'll probably remove that location as being available and ask folks to try to find another spot. If the site is being used for illegal activities, right? So if it's being used for drug use or crime or prostitution or what have you, on the recommendation of the St. John Police. So we're going to take guidance from that from the police themselves, not just going to take anonymous calls from the public. The police feel there's an issue with a specific site, we'll take action and we'll make sure that it's not available. Or if there's public safety concerns, so I think as the public is aware, essentially, we declared all of Rockwood Park preemptively during the fire ban as red, right? We worked with our outreach team to ensure that people weren't sleeping there because we knew it was a higher risk of fire and potentially burning down Rockwood Park and impacting the homes around it. So if we note that there's a fire risk caused by tenting in certain areas, we might say that's a legitimate reason not to tent there. Or if there's a public safety risk for whatever reason, we'll address those on a case-by-case basis based on the unique circumstances without making carte blanche decisions. And then for any other reason that C O or the designate determines that there's a legitimate reason while aligning with this policy guidance. Okay, so there's some caveats, but generally speaking, again, if it's not red, it's yellow. So there will be minimum site standards that the city is going to start expecting for the yellow zones. So and this is based on a best-practice jurisdictional scan across North America on what is done in other communities and what is effective and trying to avoid what is not effective. So we're saying a minimum of three meters between tents. Part of that reason is good practice, it's a significant fire risk. If a tent catches fire and it's really close to another, both of those tents or multiple tents are going up. So this is just practical about keeping some distance. But we also want no more than five tents in a cluster. And this prevents some of that recurrence of potential garbage or public health challenges. We also want a minimum of 50 meters between those clusters, right? So if there's a cluster of, you know, three tents, five tents, what have you, they have to be at least 50 meters away. And it's again, so we're trying to avoid having really large encampment sites that can become unmanageable unruly for the city or for the public. We're also requiring that these sites be kept clean and orderly. We're going to be checking, we're working with the outreach team to provide skills and supports for people who have difficulty with that. Now, the public's aware that many individuals in encampments struggle with hoarding, right? It's a mental health issue in most cases. We're going to be compassionate about that, but we're also going to start saying people have to keep their tents in good order, right? We have to have that balancing act between a clean city and a safe city. And then we're also not going to permit structures that would pose a fire hazard, such as temporary wooden structures. I think everyone is aware, we've, we've had members of our community who've lost their lives in the past few years through encampment fires. Many of them started with wooden structures that caught fire. So that's just best practice that we've seen. We still don't feel tents are, tents are not housing, point blank. But we also recognize that some people will still want a tent and these yellow zones do provide that alternate. So this is a map of the red zones, now that you've heard the context of red versus yellow. We're going to be releasing an interactive map a little bit later this week, so the public can drill down and find out, you know, is my neighborhood a red zone? Is the daycare I send my kids to, is that a red zone? How far does it extend? Right, so this will be available on the City Shape Your City page. And again, so there's a lot of red here, but there's a lot more white. As you can see in all those quote-unquote white areas on this map are areas that are viewed as yellow. The city is also going to be working very closely with the outreach team. We have, we have really sophisticated internal maps of every single property in the city, every property owner. We're going to work with the outreach team, ensuring that we can support individuals who might be asked to relocate from red zone to help find alternates if they still choose to tent outside. So we have that availability. We're going to use that technology to work with them and make sure the outreach team is sharing that information. And so additional actions, as the C O mentioned, there's four actions that the city is going to continue to take. In addition to these actions that you've just heard about, we're going to start cleaning up garbage in Waterloo Village nightly, four to five nights per week. Public Works Team is going to take concerted effort to start really sprucing up the neighborhood, in particular, commencing this week. We're going to establish a joint City of St. John and St. John Police Force working team and report back on some potential capital changes that we can implement that are going to enhance crime prevention, crime deterrence, increase public safety. Some of those conversations have already started, those are going to continue. You will almost certainly see that as part of the capital budget process. We're also going to coordinate with St. John Police to increase visible security presence in areas of concern. Right, and I think that we've heard very loud and clear from the public where those areas are. You yourselves on the horseshoe know those are, we're already working collaboratively to ensure that there's visible security or police presence in those areas to provide again more reassurance to the public, but also to address some of the instances of criminality that we've also seen. And then we're also going to have a standing item on the Public Safety Committee meetings that provide a regular update on progress made related to this. It will also include the involvement of the police chief and the fire chief. And there's a series of actions for the province. So we are requesting a joint review with the province and our frontline partners for social service that are offered, particularly in the Waterloo Village, to determine if adjustments can or should be made to the model there better serve community. So that could include changes to programs, changes to locations, could include having satellite services in alternate locations. We've already heard feedback that if people can't tent near Waterloo Village, how are they going to get to services? One conversation that's already going to start is how do we bring services to them as well, right? So it's not just putting everybody in one location and creating that clustering effect, it's how do we spread things out? Can we address security concerns, hours of operation, all those things? We also are requesting that the province takes the lead on putting an action team together of senior resources, so there's a senior staff or elected officials from at least the minimum of Departments of Justice and Public Safety, Social Development, Horizon Health, we'd probably add Housing New Brunswick to this list. Particularly, we want to focus as well on addiction and mental health services to work with the city and St. John Police and other stakeholders to address community safety, homelessness, addictions and the mental health crisis that we're experiencing. Certainly, the city can't do it alone. Our stakeholders who are working on the frontlands can't do it alone. The province can't do it alone. But we can work together to solve this problem. We're also requesting the province to provide public health resources, so this could be in the form of social worker or mental health professionals, to support again that human rights approach that Cara spoke about relocations. We're going to talk to you about an accelerated timeline here shortly. The outreach team, you've only awarded the contract for them this evening. Small and mighty, if we want them to go quicker, we want this to move quicker, we also need to ensure that the province brings some additional resources to the table so we can move quicker. So our speed will depend on our ability to get the province to work closely with us on this. But we've already started those conversations. We're hopeful that we'll see some movement there. We also want to request number four, the province to add dedicated security services to our emergency shelters throughout the city. We want to request that the province provide adequate screening at the shelter on 94 Rossay Avenue, again, on both Rossay Avenue and Thorn Avenue. And then we also want a request that the province cost share on some of those crime deterrence initiatives. So if there's costs that come up as part of that good capital budget process, we think there's an opportunity for various provincial funds to come to the table and partner with us to increase safety here in the city. And then we want the city and the province to monitor the implementation of this red zone implementation plan with us. And if it's needed, that they provide more resources, right? So we have a team that's going to be have nine people on it once they're fully fleshed out. But they're going to be monitoring a fairly large geographic area and trying to be very responsive and to have different response times. There's a lot of schools, there's parks, there's playgrounds, areas where, you know, tents will be a higher risk. It's a lot of ground to cover, right? We're very confident that the outreach team is going to do some good work. But this is a caveat that if we need more support, we want the province to be there shoulder to shoulder with us. And then we also request to the province to continue to provide additional bridge subsidized supportive and affordable housing in the city, as well as additional resource of mental health and addiction support. So more housing across the entire spectrum. They've done a lot of the needs analysis, but we need more, we need it done faster. We also know it's not just the province, it's other partners, developers, not-for-profits, but we got to move faster. I think we all recognize that. So what does this plan look like in terms of next steps and timing? So this evening, you've already awarded the contract for outreach, and this is the public presentation for the role of the red zones. Tomorrow, the official implementation plan starts in earnest. We are going to begin accelerated cleanup. As I mentioned, we're going to start taking action on Waterloo Village. We're going to start working, people are going to see more vacant encampments clean up more quickly, especially as we start moving encampments out of red zones and into yellow zones or into housing. And you're going to start to see that over the next few weeks. And so this two-week period, really this is about providing notice. So letting individuals know who are living and homeless, who might be in one of these areas, hey, some changes are coming. We need to start working with you and you need to start thinking about where you might go instead. Do you want to move to an emergency shelter? Do you want to have a conversation about a green zone, transitional housing? Those conversations will be had on an individual basis led by our outreach team with the support of the city and that other multidisciplinary team as we talked about. In two weeks' time, on September 22nd, we're also going to present to you a formal framework that sort of outlines more detail as well as some of the principles that we are following. You've heard it already, it's in your housing for all strategy, the principles that we're following as we're doing this work. We're taking a human rights approach, it's person-centered, right, trauma-informed care, like all of those key aspects for how we're going to do the work. And provide a little bit more detail, more flesh on the bone, so to speak. We're also going to bring forward an amendment to our traffic bylaw, just to give a little bit more teeth to some of the things that we might need to resort to if there's encampments in the public right of way. And then I'll have a special media council the following day for third reading for that as well. Stage two begins September 23rd. And that's where we're going to start formally going with this multidisciplinary team, site to site of those higher-risk areas. Areas that we have already identified there's a higher risk portfolio to the city. We're going to start talking to the residents there and saying, do you have an alternative place to go? How can we help you get there? Can we provide you support? They'll check in repeatedly. The goal is to have folks moved within about two weeks of getting sort of that direct notice. The indirect notice is probably going to come over these first two weeks. And then two weeks after that, starting October 6th, that team is again going to start spreading out to further areas of the red zones and making sure that all areas of the red zones are covered. Again, with the goal of having no more tents or encampments in our red zones on or around October 31st. And then we'll continue with enhanced monitoring after that, right? So that'll be ongoing. The outreach team would deal with it in a humane compassionate way. Immediately try to connect people to housing if and when these tents pop up. So that is the general timeline and the recommendation is in your kit. As the clerk mentioned, there's one new resolution that came out and it's the final one, I'll just read it here quickly. That you establish red zones, it's the criteria that are provided, that you direct the C O to begin implementation of the plan, and that the mayor be authorized to send letters to the province and the ministers. Regarding those eight actions that you just heard about. And so with that, my colleague Cara and I are happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions, councillors, who'd like to ask a couple of questions. I'm going to go to councillor Killen first, over to you. You, your worship. Okay, so first question, I've just had two. What services can or will folks expect in the yellow zone? So I know right now in some of our zones, we're already doing garbage pickup, for instance. So what what can the yellow zone sort of expect from the city?
I'll take this one first. So at this point, this is still to be determined. So we're generally providing garbage service as a minimum. We're going to work with the outreach team in determining what those needs are. That'll be conversations that we continue to have as community, additional services or additional services that we want to provide in certain locations. So we're still determining that. There's no decisions that have been made about those various amenities that could be provided.
Okay, so you mentioned Fresh Start who did receive the award this evening and the consent agenda, correct?
They did, yes.
Yes. Would I be able to hear from the executive director Melanie Votor about how they feel about this plan? Your worship, would that be furnished, considering they're awarded the offer today or?
I don't think so because of the just the process.
I asked through them what they said about the plan, like what Fresh Start feels about it? About the housing strategy? Cara, do you want to take that question?
Through your worship to the councillor, in discussions with the outreach team, we're still working through what the plan can actually look like. We've chatted about the intention of moving forward beginning tomorrow, as well as what it it could potentially look like. But we will be meeting this week tomorrow actually to talk through the actual implementation.
So I'm just wondering if they're comfortable, I guess, with some of these terms and conditions and parameters and steps, I guess.
Through your worship to the councillor, as we've been working through the the policy pieces, we've been providing updates and working with the project team on what this could look like. As we were rolling this out over the weekend and chatting through what this, what tonight is going to entail, pieces of the plan had been shared with the presentation itself. And there are some areas that we're still working through that the outreach team is not comfortable with. But as we work through that, we'll try to find a solution to be able to proceed.
So maybe you can bring that back to us eventually to let us know where, what the issues have been and then where where you've landed. Thank you. Councillor Harris, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, thank you both for your work and and the effort that's been going into this. I think it's important for the public to know that, like it was said, there is no playbook and nobody's holding up a costed alternative. Every municipality has tried something, failed, gone to court, Supreme Court struck them down, then been sued, like it's it's a mess out there. The housing system in this country, I've commented on before, has been built for profit, not for people, for about 30 years. And it should be no surprise that we find ourselves in this situation. But we are going to try to do our best that we have, which leads me to this, I guess, what I put as a title here, avoiding social dumping. So this idea, we all know it runs downhill, like this, this idea that thing, the problem keeps being passed down until it gets to the civil society, which has a ton of responsibility, but very little funding to actually work with to solve the problem. And that's been something that's been going on since about the 70s and especially through the 80s and 90s, and now here we are. So I don't want to see that trend continue. So that leads me to my first question. How much money do we have for service enhancement? Because my biggest concern is we're going to be working with people to redirect them and move them to places. And all we're offering when we get there right now, for certain, is this garbage cleanup and tidying with some now heavy-handed enforcement. So a lot of stick, not a lot of carrot. And these folks are not people, they're across the spectrum as far as their capacity, as far as their abilities and you name it. So how much money do we have to work with here to take some of these things that come up? Say a yellow area, a yellow zone area does have more clusters, does require Say, a yellow area, a yellow zone area does have more clusters, does require more services. Do we have enough money here? I know the federal government supports this. We're the only municipality to get funding to go through with an initiative like this, which is great. But it still leaves some questions on the table around what we can feasibly expect from our frontline workers to, to work with to solve problems as they come up. Because I get it, there's problems that are going to come up, there's problems happening right now that we really aren't equipped to deal with, and we're behind the eight ball. So I want to make sure we're positioned properly. And that leads me to my third point. I know there's a lot of points in here. So about how much money we have to play with, do we really believe the province is going to be here to have our back? Because we go down a long list of where they haven't. But I know that they're trying to wrap their head around this, and we've had folks from Social Development and other organizations, departments from, from the province come in. So what is our confidence level? If we need another $500,000 to troubleshoot problems along the way, or $20,000, like, the range is probably around there, that they're going to be there for us? Have they indicated anything by way of support in that area?
Okay, I'll get you to tackle those as quickly as you can. I know the money thing is, is tricky for you to talk about, but.
Through your worship to the councillor, I'll try to go quickly through those. So our plan that we submitted to the province through the federal government to get funding for this, because as you recall, when you approved the plan in July of last year, there wasn't budget assigned to this, as you've correctly deduced. Like, there's no budget lines that say, are you going to pay for porta-potties or fresh water at a site? So the short answer to that is, there's no, there's nothing in the budget right now to provide some of those amenities. And there wasn't, it wasn't our strategy to offer what you might characterize those amenities are managed encampments, which is a process that some municipalities have taken. It doesn't mean we can't shift, right? But that wasn't in our plan, it wasn't what we asked funding for. Now, we do have funding that we've offered through the contract with the outreach team, so they can offer supports to people that they're reaching out to. So whether that's in the form of sleeping bag, transportation supports, or rent supports, actually, to helping them, like, onsite with their real needs. And there is money available to the outreach team to be able to do some of that work. But I would classify that as marginal. It's not really going to move the needle in terms of building new housing. In terms of will the province be there, it's too early to say, but I can say the province has been very willing and a collaborative partner in this. We didn't have any money to do this a year ago, and it was through conversations repeatedly, staff at tables, at political tables, that we worked together to find a solution. And as the CEO said, we're the only city in the province to get some funding. So we remain optimistic that there could be other pots of funding available if council determines and our partners determine there's additional needs here, and we, we want to be able to put those asks together when they come.
All right, thank you. Councillor Redmond, you had a question?
I do, Mayor, but I have a comment too. But, you know, there's, there's definitely other needs, we already know that. But I guess I'll kind of ask, because I think there'll be some concerns after councillor Killen's question came up. So what I'm wondering is, if you can just give a little bit of an outline of what kind of criteria that Fresh Start would hit in the RFP? Because, I mean, I'm sure that there's little things for you guys to chat about with this whole process, but, you know, like, what, what requirement did they apply to cover? So, just to give, give an idea of, like, you know, doing the outreach, moving people into, into, like, yellow zones from red zones. Just give me a general idea if you can, because I think the public's going to be a little worried now.
Through your worship to the councillor, as we were working through the, the framework of the red zones and the yellow zones, that's been part of the conversation and part of the RFP process. So the, the, the response times, the expanded outreach team in regards to when their, the shifts will be, for example, seven days a week, that was part of it. Also about relocating from yellow, sorry, from red to yellow zones as well was also part of the, the RFP as well. The pieces that were not part of it was the intricate details of how we're going to be doing that moving forward.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
And the plan itself.
And I just wanted to quickly say, like, great work to staff. We've had all kinds of people asking, when is the city going to get this finished? But let me say, and I'm not trying to pass the buck, this has never been in the municipal responsibility. So as I would throw questions in at staff, they go, well, I'll go back to Social Development, go talk to the frontline teams, because I don't know. It was never their job. Imagine your job, and somebody's saying to you, oh, you know what? No, all that you do, no, I need to do this. So can you give me all kinds of answers? So of course, you didn't have them. I think it's also really important, and I really want to stress, that, that staff are careful about the language that we're using. We really don't need to enhance any stereotypes that our unhoused community are involved in all kinds of criminal activity. That's not true. I know sometimes it's hard, because, you know, obviously, there's criminal activity.
Councillor, I don't think that's been suggested in this, in this presentation.
Okay, well, I mean.
I think we all know that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's said. And the other thing that I wanted to say is, I'm really proud of staff and council that we're trying to follow humanitarian approach, because if we get out there in a bunch of uniforms pushing people along to nowhere because there's no appropriate housing, then we can't do anything. We do need to have something really respectful, and I think we do need to be making sure that those yellow zones, you have running water, you have porta-potties, like, however we need to get this done, we're going to have to get it done, or that whole idea of a humanitarian approach just won't work. So finally, just in, in conclusion, I just want to say, the other thing that we also know is, this is just doing the bare minimum. We're not hitting the root cause, housing, mental health, addictions, trauma, addressing things like slum lords, affordability. That's how we can help Canadians. But thank you
Okay. I will say that the root cause is not ours. It belongs to the province, but we do have the consequences of the breakdown of systems. So we need to, we need, we are in the trenches, and we want to make sure that we provide those services for people. Deputy of you.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, thank you very much for all the time and effort you put into this. As the councillor Redmond pointed out, you know, we're really trying to help out here, but it's not really our area of expertise. However, having said that, we are leading the province in terms of tackling this problem. And that is something to be somewhat thankful for. A couple of questions. Everything's yellow unless it's red or green. Okay, so I live in an area where I've got a little bit of green space across the street from me, and I've got a little dog, I can take him around, walk him over there, maybe sit down on the bench. Would that area be, and it's, it's in the yellow zone, okay, is that like a preferred yellow, or is that an inactive yellow, or is that an active yellow? Like, I mean, I think there's a lot of people that are confused. That's, that's the first part of my question. And the second part of my question is, my house falls in a yellow zone area, okay? And I wake up in the morning, and I've got company, okay? I've got little kids, whatever, I, I really don't want my company. So in this, it says that citizen can ask to have the company removed, but then they do the cleanup. Whereas today, if, you know, a resident moves on, then, you know, we have somebody clean it up in the province base work, because it's a provincial issue. So just two, two questions, and I'll get out of here.
Through your worship to the deputy mayor. So first question, I guess without knowing a lot of details, and I won't share with everyone where you live, but there's a number of city vacant lands that may or may not be designated parks. It could be LPP lands, it could be vacant land that we're not using for city purposes. Those, depending on where it is on the map, those might be available as a yellow zone. Whether someone chooses to tent there as that's an ideal spot, may not be the right case. Again, people want their privacy, they don't want to be feeling like they're, you know, in a fishbowl and having everybody stare at them. So it may be allowed, maybe not, I don't know, I'd have to look at the case by case. But it might be the case where you might see tents in some of these green spaces or forested areas in other parts of the city. Either we can cluster them all in one area, or they have to be spread out, like, if there's going to be some tents. Our hope is that people will take housing, but there's the reality that there might be tents in other parts of the city as part of this plan. So we're not trying to hide that, it's, we're trying to be honest about that. And in terms of cleanups, Cara talked about cleanups, it's private property owners' responsibility to clean up their own private property if there's an issue. Now, we'll work with them if, if there's a challenge from the encampment, but if it's on public property, the city takes the initiative and does the cleanup. If it's on provincial land, we'll clean up ourselves and bill it back to the province. But if it was in your property, deputy mayor, you would have to clean it up. Thanks a lot.
Councillor Norton, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to, to the leadership team that's been, been heading this, this initiative. Councillor Killen asked an interesting question as it related to yellow zones. Would, would the, would the public be made aware of, for lack of a better word, any amenities or services that would be deployed or brought to those sites prior to implementation?
At, at this point, through your worship to councillor, there still hasn't been agreement yet about what amenities, if any, would be brought to yellow zones. Like, at a minimum, I think, as the public is aware, we've been providing garbage service. Right now, that is, that's the single amenity that the city is routinely providing. No other amenities have been offered by the city to this point. Doesn't mean we will or we won't, the decision just hasn't been made to this point. So I suspect there would be information that would be shared at a certain point, but we still have to work through what that would look like.
So, yeah, I, can I just get, I guess I'm just looking for stronger clarification on that. For instance, if those sites were to see, if those sites were to see through, through the cities, through the cities' resources or funding through other levels, and they were dispatched through some of our community partners such as porta-potties, could be hand washing stations, could be first aid kits, could be fire pits. If any services were to be deployed to those yellow zone sites, would the public be made aware at the time of deployment what those amenities were and a costing of such?
I would say, at this point, if there's any amenities to be aware, it probably involves a budgetary question, which inherently involves coming back to council first. I couldn't say with confidence when we would notify the public when it was deployed, but that would be a conversation for this horseshoe to determine whether those amenities should be placed and what that cost should be. So at this point, you haven't decided to spend any money on these particular amenities other than garbage? So I, I hope that answers your question.
So I'll, I guess, I'll take some assurance in that, before we stand up those yellow sites and make them quasi-campsites with amenities that are comparable to some of our, some of our provincial or federal parks, that this body and the public would, would know of those things. I, I do have questions around steps, I'm struggling with this one. One of the things that keeps on resonating with me is the difference between steps and timelines. And I keep on hearing it, and maybe I'm in an echo chamber, that could be, that could be it. One of the, one of the things I keep on hearing is, we work in steps but not in timelines. And from, from what I'm hearing from the public is, there is a demand and an appetite that we see some stronger timelines as it relates to action and as it relates to cleanup. However, what I keep on hearing is that we work in steps, and those steps are not associated or tethered to any specific timelines. Is, is that, is that a fair assumption?
Through your worship to the councillor, when we were exploring different approaches, whether it's on a timeline or not, we, doing the, the environmental scans, some municipalities do a three-day process, for example. So that's the foundation of where we put together the three-step location, relocation from. The reason why we, we chose or were proposing, recommending to do the three steps as opposed to three days, is that resources are not always there. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time to have that conversation with the person and to find another location for them. And sometimes it takes a little bit of time to even connect with the person, depending if they're at their, their home when the outreach team is there. So step one and step two usually happens within the day or two of each other, or from my understanding, working with the outreach team, they're, those first two steps usually happen relatively quickly. If, if we do need to go to the step three process where we would engage a multidisciplinary team, which is sometimes determined right at the beginning, depending on, on the client, then that does take a little bit more time to coordinate the different folks on that team to be able to come together and then go out to that site. So we opted to recommend a three-step process. And as we continue to build out what this looks like, the operations of that, there will be more details as we go forward.
I, I, Cara, thank you for, thank you for that explanation. I, you know, one of the, one of the things we do when we're, how we frustrate the people we serve is when we continually move the goalposts. And, and in essence, that becomes a moving, a moving target. And I know when we're delivering services, that that, that that is not a perfect science, and we're dealing with people, and we're dealing with issues that are complex. But we're also dealing with a public that has also been, been patient and has been looking for, looking for more precision in timelines. I mean, that's how we move economies forward, it's how the private sector works, it's how we work in our day-to-day lives, and it's really, this governing body has to have some sort of stringent, stringency attached to the fact that we've got to have more precision on our, on our timelines. And those steps just aren't satisfying. The other thing where I'm going to have a struggle supporting this is, is what we're dealing with is, we're dealing with the possibility of much of our public being color-coded into a yellow zone. And I, and from my vantage point, there is no yellow zone. We, we are a red zone. And this is one councillor speaking from what I'm hearing and, and have to, have to vote in that way. There's no yellow zones, there's no green zones. We have got to take a position, and my vote has to lead me that way, that we are, we are at a point in time that we have to red zone. And, and that is, that is not to say that we can't do that with peace, order, and good government, and deliver it in a compassionate way that is compliant with the Charter, but by vantage point, we are, we are no longer at a time where it's yellow or green, we are a red zone as a community. So I can't be okay with it.
Okay. This is not acceptable, folks. Oh, I'm trying to continue, continue this meeting, it's not acceptable. So if you don't want to play by the rules in here, I'm going to have to ask people to leave. Councillor Low, over to you next.
Yeah. First of all, like, as you're well aware, 90% of everything's in my ward. Haymarket, Waterloo, everywhere, Garden, they're all my, under my council, right? We signed a contract tonight with Fresh Start, and we haven't gotten an agreement, we're working through the agreement with them after we signed an agreement with them? Is that what you told me?
We're finalizing these details, but you've authorized us to enter into those contracts. We have an RFP, we already know the terms, we know the deliverables that we want them to deliver, there's general consensus on it, it's just working through a few final details.
We have, but going back to the first councillor spoke, like, does Fresh Start agree with what's up in the chart, what's going to happen starting tomorrow morning?
I'm going to pass that one over to the CEO.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, this is following normal course in terms of having mayor and council authorize, you know, our ability to execute on an agreement, so we'll work through that. If there are any issues, we would obviously report back to council, but I don't foresee that at this point.
Okay, we'll go with that. The interpretation of the word tent, does Fresh Start, okay, forget about Fresh Start for a sec. The interpretation of a word tent, you've, you mentioned it three times. Is that, the fortresses are built in Garden Street and Haymarket Square, are they tents with the plywood around them and everything over it? They're not tents. So when these people are asked to move before the end of the second week, it'll be tents that are going to what we call white zones. be tents that are going to what we call white zones, yellow zones, I guess. I'm all mixed up with crayons.
So generally speaking, the outreach team is connecting with an individual who's in a structure in a red zone. Let's say it's wooden walls and a tarp roof. We determine it's a red zone, they can't be there again, and they're going to work through that three-step process. We're going to inform them that here's housing opportunities, here's beds that are available. It'll take an individualized case-managed approach and dealing with them respectfully. But they'll also inform them that no matter what, they can't take their existing house with them, right? We won't be having structures, pallet walls anymore. Like, that's something the city is not interested in seeing. We'll allow tents, the kind of thing that you would buy in an outdoor store, for instance, while recognizing that, again, tents aren't housing either, right? The goal is to obviously get more housing, but for folks who insist on staying outdoors, at least have to be tents, something that is at least slightly that you might see in a campground, right?
Okay, like, it's hard to understand, really, but we kind of have approved yellow zones, council has, seven owned by the city, one owned by the province, right? And nobody knows where they are, that's fair ball, it's secret. But if Fresh Start goes tomorrow morning and goes to, we'll say, Garden Street and starts speaking to somebody about wanting them to move, do they know where these seven?
I'm going to pass that right over to the CEO right now.
Your Worship, you know, we need to work with the outreach team. We're talking about relocating people who are unhoused, who currently have homes that they've constructed over a period of time, in some cases, maybe two or three years. So we want to do that in a thoughtful way, and we want to ensure that where we're moving them and relocating and facilitating that relocation actually aligns with who they are and where they're going to reside. Until such time as society catches up and meets their needs, right now, you know, there are a lot of people being left behind, and society needs to catch up. And I think, you know, all of us as a government are aware of that and need to do a lot more work on that front in order to meet people where they are.
So in other words, tomorrow morning, and hopefully we can start something tomorrow morning for the public, Fresh Start wouldn't be able to tell them that they can go to a certain location, one of the locations, Brent, that we approved as a council, is that what you're saying?
Well, that could be one of a lot of locations. There's a lot of yellow zones in the city. There are people who reside now in places none of us know. And so there are people who could choose to reside elsewhere outside of sites that we think may be acceptable to someone to relocate to. It'll be determined through kind of an ongoing approach with outreach services, working with the clients or with the participants and kind of, you know, where they go. And we'll be there to work with them as we reestablish the city and kind of how things are structured.
Thank you. Done. Councillor Darling, over to you next.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll try to keep it incredibly brief. My first question, which really goes along with Councillor Killen's question, is for me, I think it is important to hear from our partner in this big project at the end of the day. So if not appropriate today, would that be something we could have at the September 22nd meeting? Is Fresh Start speak as well?
Well, I guess what we could do, you're going to bring back that information to us, are you not? Okay, all right.
I think just in terms of, like, for myself as a councillor, going through this and the public to see the frontline organization themselves address it, I think it'll go a long way.
Thank you.
I think so. My second kind of food for thought for folks as we're going through this, you know, with our federal funding, we've agreed to do things with a humanitarian approach as appropriate. So especially when we're talking about things like amenities, if we're going to have expectations of people in places, we need the ability to be able to meet those expectations. So if we're saying encampments need to maintain a certain degree of cleanliness and order, we need to give people a realistic way to do that. And, you know, as much as we can debate the amenities, how much we want to give folks, if we're saying a certain expectation of behavior, we need to make sure we're setting them up for success and not just more failure and moving around.
Agree 100% on that one. Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I'm a little stuck on your metaphor of building the airplane while we fly. In our urgency to move along, I think certainly the public's been very patient. We've talked about red zones and yellow zones, well, maybe not yellow, but red versus green for a long time. And I guess in folks I've been speaking with, you know, I've said, certainly the Supreme Court, we have funding that is kind of dependent on it, making sure we're taking a humanistic approach. And some other jurisdictions have chosen to play whack-a-mole and just move people around without having anywhere for people to go, just harass the unhoused, hopefully to send them somewhere else. We have chosen to take a very deliberate, planned, humanistic approach based on the law that we know in Canada and how things work to make sure we got the green zones established. And as soon as the green zones were established, we could look at red zones and yellow zones. And certainly we're there. And this kind of lends to what some of the other councillors talked about, about hearing from our service provider. It is a little odd that we are being asked to approve what council wants to have happen having already approved the contract with the service provider. Because ultimately, this is what council, what we vote on tonight, is what we expect to happen, I think. So I think that's why it lends to the next conversation with the service provider. So I am certainly open to having that conversation later, but as I understand it, you know, what council proves tonight, this is what we're expecting our service provider with the most humanistic and caring approach to follow through on. That's my understanding. I do appreciate the approach. I kind of like where we are. I think there's going to be evolution. Green zones are pretty well-defined and well-resourced, and I think everybody in the room agrees that our ideal would be to help those who are living unhoused get to green zones, move along the continuum to permanent housing. For those that aren't ready, it can't be a free-for-all in the city. You know, there are areas, school, I'm glad schools are listed first, you know, schools are out of bounds. You can't have kindergarten students showing up with great respect to a risk that is unknown when they arrive at school in the morning. So, but we need to have yellow zones because we need folks to have a place to stay. If we're going to push them out of a red zone and say, you can't be at a school in this other list of spot, and you're not ready to go to a green zone, we have to have a spot for you with some level of support that we haven't determined yet, with hope and support, and maybe a nudge and influence that they move along the spectrum. My question follows up a little bit, Councillor Norton got me thinking, you know, we have priority zones, red zones you can't be, green zones we want you to be, yellow zones are still being worked on. That's the geography. Do we have an urgency spectrum that we are working on as well? For example, if you have folks who are in a red zone, but it's near a highway, is that a different level of three-step urgency than folks who are in a school's playground? Can you speak to, is that urgency involved in this conversation as well?
The Your Worship to the councillor. For this specific plan that will begin rolling out tomorrow, we're still to define what those, the high risk, where we're going to go first in those first two weeks and then the following two weeks and onward. For the overall plan after October 31st moving forward, we would, it would be case-by-case, but following the rapid response or standard response guidelines. So with the high-risk areas, schools, for example, that would be a response time within 30 minutes to have that conversation to move forward. So if it's a, but if it's in a standard response where it's a two to three day, but we see the necessity because it is an urgency based on the circumstances, that's where it's a case-by-case. So there is some judgment components that need to come into play as well. Same with the buffers, for example. So since we've used schools as an example, if there's somebody encamped just at the edge of the buffer and they're not causing any harm or risk, then maybe that's not necessarily a 30-minute response because they're not in that red zone, it's okay to wait. But if they're in the buffer and there is an issue, again, case-by-case, and outreach will help define those circumstances, then we would relocate and start that step process as opposed to waiting for the two to three days.
No, no, I do appreciate that answer because I think, you know, this is new to all of us, as the public is, many I know are tuned in tonight, you know. So there's a 200-meter buffer around a school, I'll stay on the school, but there's a difference between if somebody's in the playground next to the school versus two football fields away. And I understand that, as long as it's involved in the conversation, that there is an urgency when there's an urgency and it's not all two to three days. So I get it and I, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stewart, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. First off, you guys, to get to this point and to be in the hot seat in front of everybody, you have all my understanding and praise, honestly, great job. I was reminded on Friday night that we have sat together over a 20-month period, 22 different times, and discussed what to do about this. No plan that we have or that you have right now is perfect. We're not going to have a perfect plan. It's a very contentious issue, no two ways about it. We can't please everybody, but we have to, we have to do something, okay? What is happening is not sustainable and it's no longer acceptable. We have compassion, absolutely. We've worked on this plan and this is the best plan that we can put forward right now to get some action done. It's fluid. This is going to be changing and there's going to be details added to this. But understand, please, that we care, that we care, but it's not, what's been happening is just not sustainable and not acceptable. So if not tonight, then when do we do this? We can't keep putting this off. So we're asking for the public to please work with us, to help, be understanding, this is going to take some time. But we do believe that our plan is the best plan that we've seen, and the federal government and the provincial government believe that it is as well. That's why they're funneling money down to us. So please be patient and let our team continue to work on the best plan that's available and it's out there, so.
Thank you, councillor Stewart. You did a great job wrapping that up, great words. I will say as well that this has been a polarizing, hear that tonight even, a polarizing issue in the community. And for anyone who thinks we're going in there with a bulldozer tomorrow, that's not happening. For starters, most of the encampments that you see aren't even on our property. And so we need to get agreements in place before we do anything to move anyone. And, you know, we have, we know that not all encampments are safe, and we know that we don't want structures, but there's a person across almost for brannans. And that structure he's got, he's got two garbage cans there. I say he, I don't know if it's a he or she, but that person has two garbage cans, that space is always neat. There hasn't been any problems there lately. So like, you know, they're not all created equal, and we want to make sure that people who are in the encampments are also safe. And we know that they're, that a vulnerable population can be infiltrated by a nefarious population. So we need to, we need to watch out for that. We have Fresh Start, who's our outreach provider, they understand that we need to build trust with people. If we have the trust with people, then we will be able to move them better and easier. If we can get them onto city properties, we can monitor those properties better and we can ensure, I think, their safety better. And we need the partner from the province to be on board with us. I think we've seen them starting that process. I feel like, I mean, it's a process that probably started 30 or 40 years ago when they started to get rid of institutional care for people. And, you know, people will say, well, they were terrible in those days, and probably they were terrible in those days. But today, if you look at something like Shanex, you would go in and you would go into the level of care you need. And that's sort of what we need as we go forward, a facility where you would go into the level of care that required because there's a huge range of acuity in that, in a population that's vulnerable. And so how do we meet the needs? We can't meet the needs. All we're doing is looking at one stream, which is housing, and we're trying to provide some type of housing because there's emergency housing on one end, shelters, there's affordable housing, but in the middle, there's all kinds of streams there. And they need, they need care from health professionals, they need lots of other services that we can't provide. So we're trying to pick this one housing and advocate for it and try to get people to where they need to go. So you've heard from all of us, and I will, I'll call the question because the motion, is the motion on the floor? No, there is, motion on the floor? Okay, I've got a mover and a seconder on that, councillor Killen and councillor Darling, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Councillor Norton, opposing motion carries. Thank you, team. All right, city clerk, thanks everyone for being here. Next item, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is-
We're going to wait five seconds, five minutes, just let people clear out. Councillor Sullivan's lights on. I'm just waiting for the crowd to leave. Get back in your seats, folks. Wage escalation's next. Councillor Sullivan just reminded me that the wage escalation policy's up next, if anybody's, if anyone likes her, if anyone's interested. All right, do we want to get started then, city clerk? Okay, can I call the next item up, please? I'm going to call up the next item. City clerk, over to you for the next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda, 13.1 Finance Committee update amendment to wage and benefit budget escalation policy.
Councillor Sullivan, you're up. It's your show.
We're still losing them. Thanks, Your Worship. So 13.1 is a proposed amendment to our wage escalation policy. So our financial policies are reviewed regularly to determine if there's merit in adjusting them based on best practices and the city's current fiscal situation. The Finance Committee is recommending that council approve the proposed amendments to the wage escalation policy, which will provide additional flexibility to the city. The full details are in your kit, but the First Amendment would allow staff to consider increases in revenue from the upcoming fiscal capacity grant, which used to be called as the unconditional grant. In the past, we didn't use that grant to calculate the policy because there was no predictability in the unconditional grant. But now that there is predictability and that it is going to be indexed into the future, it will allow the municipality to know 75% of the grant prior to the release of the new annual payments. That'll add significant predictability. So with those changes to fiscal reform, staff is comfortable in including that revenue as part of the policy. The Second Amendment provides the city to allocate more resources to service new infrastructure as the city is growing by allowing 1% of tax-based growth to be directed to new resources when the city's tax-based growth is robust and provide for that flexibility while ensuring that the city's budget remains structurally balanced in accordance with the financial plan. Now, this amendment will support achieving council's 10-year objective in the strategic plan. So it's those two tweaks, but I'll make the motion that common council approve the amended wage and benefits budget escalation policy, FAS 0007.
Can I get a seconder on that? Councillor Ogden? I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Carries. Thank you, city clerk. Motion passes. Carries. Thank you, city clerk. Next item.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 13.3. It's Finance Committee Common Council Input into 2026 General Operating Budget.
Councillor Sullivan, back to you.
Thanks, your worship. It's been a busy night and I can't really remember everything that we're going to be discussing at the next meeting. So this will be a good item to tag on. We've done this the last couple of years and I think this is a good legacy that we will be passing on to the next council. It's budget time, so we will do the horseshoe round table at the next meeting to ask. What people think should be their priorities, pulled out of all of our priorities and plans. As we go into budget 2026. So this is just the notice to council to put your thinking caps on and do your homework. Staff will send out links to all of our plans if you want to review. And if you can come with your. One or one and a half pot items for the next council meeting that we can take into consideration as we do the 2026 budget.
One or one and a half?
Some people like to talk. But I'll move the receiving file.
Thank you. I'll take a second round receiving file. Councillor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is the item from Committee of the Whole, 17.1. And it's. An acquisition of parcel of 381 Greenhead Road, recommendation from Committee of the Whole. And the resolution would read that the city. Purchase an approximately 98.4 square meter portion of PID 00406678. From Jill Elizabeth Kelly on the following terms and conditions. A, the city shall pay purchase price of $2,000 plus HST if applicable. B. The city shall be responsible for all costs associated with the preparation and filing of the subdivision plan and any other documents necessary to affect the transaction. And C, the city shall pay up to $650 plus HST on account of the vendor's legal associated, associated. Legal fees associated with the land transaction. And two, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the documents necessary to affect the above noted transaction.
Thank you, Councillor Harris and Councillor Darling, seconding on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Over to you, Councillor Lowe. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Killen, seconding. Thanks, team. Thanks to everyone for being here this evening.